But the first item on the, our recognitions, proclamations, and presentations tonight, we have a presentation from the Lawrence Police Foundation to the Lawrence Police Department of AED equipment. So, I know we have representatives here of the foundation and the police department. If we could have your names, that would be great.
Mayor Amix, commissioners, good evening. I'm Michelle DeRusso, and I'm joined this evening by fellow Lawrence Police Foundation Board members Mary Beth Bylack, Kim Haig, Harry Harrington, and Nadine Hyde. Not in attendance this evening are Kevin O'Malley, Heather Belcher, and Rob Farah. The sole purpose of the Lawrence Police Foundation is to strengthen the services of the Lawrence Police Department. We do so through funding and collaboration, and we encourage and support community awareness to strengthen the partnership between the men and women of the Lawrence Police Department and the citizens they serve. In 2014, we have celebrated successes and suffered disappointment. We are here this summer to present the department with five AEDs that were funded by an anonymous donor who wished to show her appreciation for the officers she credits with saving her child's life. In November, we suffered a great disappointment when the sales tax to finance a new police facility was defeated. We will continue to raise awareness for a new police facility. The need is still there, nothing has changed, except a means to finance it. We now look to you, our city leaders, to make this a priority, not only for the safety of the community, but also the safety of your city employees that protect and serve. But tonight, we are here to celebrate another success. This incredible group of people with me this evening not only put forth many hours working on the facility campaign, but also organizing our annual fundraiser, the CAR-54 Where Are You Golf Tournament. Some of them did double and triple duty, covering for those of us who had our efforts focused elsewhere. Through their hard work and the support of our many sponsors, including our presenting sponsor Ride for Cops, and lead sponsors Lawrence Memorial Hospital and West Side 66, we had another successful event and are here this evening to announce a presentation of eight additional AEDs to the Lawrence Police Department. This amazing group, in just two years, has raised just under $42,000 and provided 30 AEDs to the department. We are now only four AEDs short of our goal of an AED in every patrol car. We'd like to take a moment to thank Sergeant McKinley for his guidance throughout the year, and Chief Khatib for his leadership and commitment to our community and the department. We are proud of the men and women of the Lawrence Police Department and appreciate their service to the community. We are honored to have the privilege to support, assist, and encourage them any way possible. We hope that you will soon find a way to provide them the secure, purpose-built facility they need to safely, efficiently, and effectively do their job. On behalf of the foundation, we wish you a safe and Merry Christmas, and best wishes for 2015. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Chief, do you have any comments?
Absolutely. I'd just like to thank again the Lawrence Police Foundation, Michelle DeRusso, these folks behind me. I think it's wonderful that we're up to 30 AEDs and $42,000 over the last three years. That's four short of where we need to be to equip all the patrol cars, and as we know, and have shared stories over the past several years, those AEDs are put to quite a bit of use. As we know, the officers out there are generally the first responders and first on scene on medicals that require those, so this is a very, very worthy cause, and again, I appreciate the support.
Well, Michelle, on behalf of the City Commission and the entire city of Lawrence, I want to thank you and all the members of the foundation for the work that you've done to help provide such a valuable resource to the men and women of our department. Don't realize until, excuse me, you may need that particular device, how important it is to have a fully equipped department, and to make sure that, you know, the folks that are there, the first responders, are able to use those in the greatest time of need. So, you know, thank you very much for all the efforts that you've done, not only on equipment needs, but also on behalf of the city and the work that you did on the police facility. And hopes that over the next weeks, we'll have a program that maybe we can start talking as a community about, you know, that real need for our department and program that we need to put in place to accomplish that need. So, anyway, that's where we are. Thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and all matters listed on the consent agenda are to be considered under one motion and will be enacted by one motion. There'll be no separate discussion on those items. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. Are there any items on the consent agenda that a member of the commission would like to have removed for separate discussion? Okay, I would like item number two, the claims. Are there any items on the consent agenda a member of the public would like to have removed for further consideration? Okay. Hearing none, with the exception of item number two, the claims, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda. Sorry. Motion made in second to approve the consent agenda made by Commissioner Reardon, second by Commissioner Shum. All in favor of that motion? Aye. Aye. Opposed? That passes 5-0. Item number two are the claims, and the first item are claims to 172 vendors in the amount of $3,134,020.78, and then also the longevity pay for city employees in the amount of $424,531.90. I would entertain a motion to approve those items on the claims. Moved.
Second.
Motion made in second approved, motion made in second for approval of those two claim items, made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Last item under claims are to six vendors on Rock Chalk Park-related items. That is in the amount of $1,090,565.57. David, explanation, those items?
Those are posted on the... The major item follows through on the commission discussion that you had, requests for reimbursement under the Economic Development Grant to RCP LLC, who we had the contract with for the work out there. We looked at all of those soft costs that was part of your regular agenda, where we had the discussion about the loan amount and the legal fees and those things, and you have, you have the recommended dollar amount. We received the money from the Assist Foundation last week, so that's in the city's checking account, and then we also have $67,970 of city payment as well. We're retaining $25,000 because the RCP still has to get some of the punch list items, primarily the stormwater ponds. Here in the winter, we're going to need to be recontoured as part of the finalization of that. They work well now, they just need to be finalized. I guess that's the best way to say it. That's the major punch list item that's remaining. We've posted all of the information that we've received from KU Endowment, which owns RCP LLC in regards to their review of those expenses, and have provided some analysis where we think the expenses are justified.
Okay, so then, I know that there's been a lot of discussion about the concrete and, you know, the cracking and that stuff. We have a plan that's in place that we believe that, you know, we're going to try and see if that's going to correct the problems.
That's a separate, correct, Mayor, that's a separate issue than this claim.
Right.
We have notified the contractor that they've got to fix the foyer area and the mezzanine area in regards to the concrete surface. We've been out there and looked at a number of different options, and actually, I think this evening, the contractor is going to, after the facility closes, is going to be trying a few things to see if they work, and we're going to continue to work until we get it right. We've also separately, again, for separate contract, retained money from that contract as well, $50,000, and we've also got the warranty requirements under the contract in regards to what the contractor needs to do, and we have, ever believe the contractor's going to follow through and get the surface appropriate. Commissioner Dever was involved in looking at that surface as well. We've got the architect that has indicated that it's not appropriate and needs to be fixed. It's not structural, it's cosmetic, but it needs to be fixed regardless, and that's what's going to happen.
Okay. And once we've exhausted that, if, you know, it can't come to any type of conclusion, what happens then?
Well, we've got contractual remedies to make the contractor fix it if it gets to that point. We also could keep retaining, I mean, there's a number of different legal options that we have in regards to that, but again, contractor's been consistent and following through on the issues that have to be fixed in any project. I know that sometimes we don't like to make analogy, we're still working on punch list items at the library, so it's not uncommon for a large project where the contractor has to finish things and get them right, and that's what's going to happen here.
Okay. Did you have a question, Jeremy?
No, I, the only thing that I was wondering about, and I do understand, Dave, in looking at other projects that we have in the community and the way that, things that have happened, but, you know, sometimes in a case like this where it is such, you know, it's a big-time project, you know, a lot of exposure, having a lot of, a lot of folks at the door, some alluded to the library, one of the things that I thought might be important to look at, if we can't correct, we're just looking at this project as a whole, especially this concrete portion, would it be something that we could use our city auditor to do a performance audit on that particular item, the concrete portion of that item?
I mean, absolutely.
Because it would be that third-party set of eyes that would be looking at it that, you know, would be different than our architects and our staff and us.
I think what you, right, what we're trying to do obviously is get it fixed and proceeding with that. Be fine to have someone else look at it as well, but we're going to, probably going to need to be somebody that's familiar with making sure that the right kind of floor surfaces are done appropriately, and I don't know, I mean, Michael would be like myself, he'd need to probably get somebody else to help him look at that. In my case, I've got architects and others that are looking at options to see what we can do to have the contractor fix it. I mean, we've looked at all the different options, all of them are still on the table, whether it's taking portions of it out, or whether it's putting epoxy in, whether it's resurfacing portions of it, whether it's doing any number of different things to make sure that it's done correctly.
Well, and before the media, I was speaking with Commissioner Dever a second about, you know, the options that have been presented through, you know, the analysis that you've done, and it's something that we ought to look at, you know, in having this done and see if that is a work that's done, or, you know, the way it should be corrected at this point. It's the best option that we have at this point, but, you know, I put that out as, you know, something to be considered in the future is some type of performance audit, you know, if necessary, on that particular portion of the project.
Unless you all direct me, otherwise, we're going to continue to look to the contractor to fix the problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
Terry, yes?
The only thing that I would ask is that if there is a solution at this time that appears to work, that if one or two or three or some years down the line, we have further problems with this, that it would still be warranted at that time. That's the only request that I would have, because the concrete is, although it's an exact science, and you also have courses, my next-door neighbor when I was in residency was an engineer, and he took concrete as an entire course, so these things have been studied for a long time, but I'd like some type of guarantee after, after a year, which I know we have the ability to, up to that time, to request them to fix things, to extend that on a more permanent basis.
That's a good point, Commissioner.
Anyone else? Okay, then the item that is before us this evening is to look at the claims, the soft costs that have been presented to us. These are to six vendors on Rock Chalk Park, again, related items, in the amount of $1, Entertain a motion? So moved. A motion for approval to hear second.
Second.
A motion made in second for approval is made by Commissioner Dever, second by Commissioner Reardon. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. That passes 4-1. Mayor Amix voting in dissension. Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. Oh, one last thing on the item number nine, which is the Cornerstone Plaza, the one-half acre. Thank Commissioner Shum, along with Dave yesterday, and working with the owner of that property to come to agreement on the sale of that lot. Here again, sound like a very good company coming to town and happy to be able to accommodate that project there, so. Anyway, Dave, city manager's report.
Mayor, members of the commission, a few items in this week's report. Got the report from Eileen on the Common Ground Program. I know Commissioner Shum was involved in its inception. You see the 2014 results and the 2015 applications. That program is continuing to be successful. Got a number of different promotional videos that Megan and others have worked on, on the Lawrence and Focus series, and encourage your review of that. The skate rink is open and has had successful use, so hopefully we continue to have appropriate skating weather, and we see strong use in that regard. We've got the October rental licensing and inspection report that has been set out for your review. Obviously, we're getting ready toward one of the major implementation dates, January 1st, when we start the work on the non-RS property in regards to rental registration. And finally, there's a public meeting on the development of an Arts R-Town grant that Christine and others will be hosting there. I mean, you see the information in regards to that. Community engagement meeting on December the 15th. Be happy to respond, any questions?
Questions, Dave?
I just want to say, Scott, great job with you and your department on the mental licensing information. I mean, it's a, organizationally, we probably want to maybe make it a little more user-friendly, you know, which that's something we could talk about, but I'm just thrilled so much with the remediation rate and, you know, with the information that we're gathering about this and what the violations are, and I would encourage anybody who had residence in supporting the previous rental registration program that we voted on earlier this year to take a look at this report and really understand its usefulness, and, you know, we're licensing more and more, and, you know, these particular units are going to be a lot safer because of, because of this program, and, you know, it's just, it's, I just wanted to say, great job, so please pass that along to your staff that works in that department, because it's fantastic.
Mayor, I'd just like to make a quick note. I went out to the sports pavilion out on the west side. It was a fascinating educational thing. I sat for half an hour and watched people come in. You had people that were out of shape, you had people that were in great shape, you had old people, you had young people, you had children, you had teenagers. One particular story was a man who was 80 years of age, and he comes out because of the fact that he's by himself, and he says, "It's much better than sitting in my house, and I can come out here and walk and talk and be with people," and it's something that I don't think we ever imagined, that type of use for this place, but it was really quite incredible. The other thing is, after we did that, we went by the downtown, and my eyes were struck by the fact that the ice rink was full, and then we went and looked at it. It was like a Norman Rockwell painting, because there was a group of about 16 people caroling, the people who were on there, the kids were having fun, and it was just a rather amazing situation to see all those people on the, on the quote's ice, having a good time, and the citizens of Lawrence benefiting by these two things, so those were, just wanted to quickly mention them.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay. Dave, thank you very much. Okay, we are on to the regular agenda. As I said, we do have a number of items where we're going to have what would appear to be a number of people being, wanting to speak this evening. To be able to accommodate everybody, to be able to speak to these items, we are going to limit our comments to three minutes. I will watch closely this evening, because we want to make sure that we hear from everybody on these items. So, the first item that we do have on the agenda is to consider approving a special use permit. This is SUP-14-00312 for a new 120-foot Verizon Wireless Communications Tower located at 1725 Bulleen Avenue, and this is submitted by Pam Corp, LLC, for Verizon Wireless on behalf of Stephen L. U. Daley, property owner of record, and consider adopting on first reading ordinance number 9054.
Thank you, commissioners. Sandy Day Planning Office, I have a number of items to go over with regard to this special use permit application. It is a little bit different than other conditional use permits that you have considered, because it is a communication tower, and also, please note that there is a protest petition, and I'll cover that toward the end of the presentation, what those requirements are. I was asked to please remind you that as a quasi-judicial matter, you do need to announce your ex parte communications, so I'll let you do that here.
Bob?
Had several conversations with neighbors, probably half, probably half dozen emails. All, the general theme was, please don't approve it and look some, have them look somewhere else. I can be specific as to the names of people, if you want me to, but they were just all the same type of comments.
Jeremy?
Had a conversation with County Commissioner Nancy Thelman. I've talked to probably a dozen people in the neighborhood and gotten countless emails, some of which I've corresponded with, and I can provide those if necessary or needed. Most, most asking for us to deny this request.
Other than the emails I've received, I have nothing to report.
I've just had emails, I had one question, one conversation with Michael Allman after the last commission meeting specifically about his thoughts, which were actually made public in the PC minutes.
Okay. And for myself, I did have a telephone conversation with Michael Allman, and with another telephone conversation with Russell Livingston, and then I had numerous emails from individuals from the, from the neighborhood, so it's all I have.
Thank you, commissioners. To start with, we'll go over the location of the request, the purpose of the request, some nuances of the code, as well as a little bit of neighborhood information, planning commission recommendations, staff recommendations, and the protest petition. This property is located on Bulleen Avenue. It is currently zoned IL. There are existing warehouse uses in that area. Communication towers are a use group listed in the other uses, so they are separate or distinct from residential, commercial, industrial, or public uses in our development code. They are allowed in all non-residential districts, subject to a special use permit, with the exception of the IM district, which they are allowed by right. The adjacent property on the west side is the Boroughs Creek Trail, and it has mixed zoning, I just wanted to point that out, that the trail itself has both RS7, IL, and IG zoning. Couple of slides here just to cover the surrounding zoning. This slide highlights where the industrial zoning is today. The green dot on this right-hand side identifies the approximate location of the proposed tower. That yellow ring that you see is the approximation of the applicant's search ring, and you'll see that in a couple of other slides as we move forward. The applicant can address you more specifically about what their search ring means and why it's important in the application process. A large part of the surrounding area is residential, both in land use and in zoning. The Villa Woods neighborhood is a planned residential development. We have other neighborhoods in the immediate proximity. Immediately to the north of the subject property is actually a residential lot that is undeveloped, so it's a vacant lot. Just to zoom in a little bit on some of that land use, because that has been a question for people, and to make sure that we have a good understanding of what land use is surrounding this property. What you see again are the industrially-zoned properties. This is a Salvation Army property that they have looked at doing some improvements. This property is actually zoned for our industrial, is the Industrial Business Park Zone on this corner here at Bulleen and, I believe that's 19th, but it's a residence. Reason for the request, and again, we'll just briefly touch on this, this is something the applicant will address in more detail. What you see is the applicant's search ring that's highlighted in red. The map on the left shows the existing condition, are their service area coverage, and the map on the right shows what their coverage service would look like with the addition of this particular tower. These propagation maps were very typical when we saw new communication towers back in the late 90s and the early 2000s. We have not had a new communication tower in the city since 2006. The development code prefers co-location over new tower construction, so the applicant will exhaust the ability to co-locate on existing towers whenever possible. When new towers are proposed, the development code requires that the applicant demonstrate a burden of proof that the new tower is needed. This is done through a third-party study, where the applicant provides a fee to the city. The city is the client who then contracts with a third party for review of the applicant's information. It is similar to a traffic study or a downstream sanitary sewer study, with the exception that we don't let the applicant do that. That is something that the city hires a third-party independent consultant to review. Couple of things that the, that the burden of proof has to justify is that there's no tower that is capable of supporting their equipment in a geographic area, or there's an existing tower, but it's not of sufficient height, there's insufficient structural capacity of an existing structure for the proposed equipment. You can see the other couple of factors here that are part of that burden of proof consideration. So, just to summarize the independent study, that is a process that we went through during the review of this project. It was conducted by Burns and McDonald on behalf of the city, and they looked at a couple of specific properties. The self-supporting tower that's located at, the county owns, at the law enforcement building. There is a tower that was identified in FCC listing, but is not constructed, so obviously it's not a choice. There is a guy tower that is on Knowledge property, and that's over on 15th Street, the grain elevator that we will talk about a little bit. All of these properties were reviewed as part of that independent consultation. And the finding or the conclusion of that third-party review was that the applicant's charge for burden of proof has been met. The structures were either too distant, well, in this case, they were all too distant to meet the applicant's engineering objective, and that is a consideration. Heightened setback are also particular elements of a review of a communication tower, as well as any structure, but, very critically for a communication tower. This slide gives you an idea of what the maximum building height is in the various districts. Structures in order for a antenna to be co-located on a building, that structure by code has to be at least 40 feet tall. And if you look at the different zoning districts, you can see that the RS districts and the CN1 districts are not able to just even structurally meet that requirement. This proposed tower is 120 feet, there's a lightning rod that gives it a little bit of additional height. Our downtown district by code has the highest building allowances at 90 feet. Next couple of slides are intended to give you some perspective of what the verticality is in that surrounding area. The blue dot highlights the U-Dale property or where the proposed tower is, the Villa Woods subdivision, the existing industrial zone, and then the existing residential zones to the north of the subject property. By and large, these structures are predominantly one-story tall. One of our staff, Jeff Crick, was able to do some modeling for us this afternoon to show, again, building height. The pink highlights the subject property. This is the grain elevator that we have been talking about, that was determined to be too distant to meet the applicant's needs. It would be... It would be a structure that may possibly have some height. Just a different view of that same information. This is downtown, where we have the majority of our height or verticality in the community. The subject property, as you can see, the grain elevator would be the one structure. We're just south of 19th Street. We do have a few other towers as we move out on 23rd Street that are not shown in this image. Tower capacity is a consideration as well. Any new communication tower is required to provide a minimum of up to three two-way communication antenna for every 150 feet of communication of that structure. The applicant, the application meets that condition to provide opportunities for other carriers to co-locate in the future if this tower is constructed. Setback. The requirement for setback of communication towers is to be set back one-half the height of their tower, so in this case, it would be 60 feet. The proposed tower does in fact meet that setback requirement, as you can see both in the site plan, that was part of your packet and summarized in these following bullets. The proposed tower, the closest structure it is located to is to the existing structure that is part of that subject property. Staff's recommendation includes a condition that the applicant provide justification about the fall zone, well, that if there is a tower failure for this type of tower, that it will collapse within its enclosure area, so that this building is shown to be protected. Any other structures meet the distance requirement and presumably would not be endangered. The park does not have any structures immediately adjacent to it, but it does have mature vegetation. And staff's concern was also to make sure that that mature vegetation is protected. The property to the north is a residential lot. It is vacant, but could be developed with a residence, and so, looking at the potential setback for that property, the tower is, other than Buleen, has the furthest distance from that property line. All setbacks are measured from property lines. This, again, just kind of highlights what's happening on that entire site in terms of where is that existing building. This dark black line highlights what is the enclosure, the fenced area, and the approximate location of the tower itself. Highlighting the proximity of the tower to the existing building, about 27 and a half feet, the applicant should provide documentation, and that's that condition, to show that that tower, if there is a tower failure, structural failure, that it stays within that chain-link Burrows Creek Corridor Plan is a plan that covers a portion of this area. In the findings, we do not have, in a special use permit, a detailed assessment of the neighborhood district as we would in a zoning application. The Burrows Creek Plan does cover this area, and it does identify the subject property as one of several that would presumably be rezoned to a commercial zoning district. This was done prior to the 2006 code, so its reference to C4 would be the equivalent in today's code of the CS district. Typically do not zone new properties to CS district, so that would be a further consideration. The commission could choose in the future to initiate rezoning of these parcels, part of that plan. That would be a separate action outside of this particular request to implement the recommendations of that particular document. One of the things that we did ask of the applicant was that they provide photo simulations. It's not a requirement of the code, but it is something that is helpful in documenting what the proposed condition is with the tower that is proposed. You have a full set of photo simulations in your packet. I'm just going to cover a couple of them tonight, which is from the residential perspective and from the park's perspective. That seems to be the area that we have received the most concern from the community. This overall shot shows where the applicant took their photos. I've tried to highlight the next couple of slides where they're seeing, where you're seeing that photo simulation in relationship to the subject property. This is the current view essentially of Buleen Street without the communication tower and what it would look like with the addition of the communication tower. What you do not see in this photo is any of the ground equipment, which would be located in the rear of the industrial building. It is typically the piece that has the most structure. It has the fence, it has the shelter buildings, it has the generators, pad sites, access drives at that, at that ground level. Everything else would be above ground level. The proposed platform that you see in the picture is at the highest platform. This tower is capable of supporting at least two additional communication cellular providers, so you could potentially see in the future this platform located at those lower elevations on this tower. From the recreation path is the next photo simulation of what that tower looks like. The applicant can address this maybe more in their presentation. There's a very short piece of the path where the tower is visible from. The rest of the recreation path, you really do not see the tower because at the pedestrian scale or the pedestrian level, where you're at, where that mature vegetation is, you're likely not going to see that tower. Make sure I'm going the right way. One of the recommendations of staff was that we do provide some additional vegetation and buffer to the site, and that is reflected in staff's recommendation that the planning commission forwarded to you. One of the questions that came up was where are existing communication towers in Lawrence? So this is a map of that. What I did notice late yesterday was that one of the towers that exists on Bob Billings' Parkway, that's on the Girl Scout property or Hidden Valley Park, actually about here, is not in the data layer somehow, so I've asked GIS staff, this data actually comes from the county, to update that in terms of that communication tower.
That's, that's just a poll at this point.
That, the one on the Hidden Valley is a monopole. It's the same kind of tower that's proposed here. This map highlights where residential zoning is in relationship to communication towers. Many of our cellular device equipment is located or co-located on water tanks that are owned by the city. This slide highlights, you can see again, the red dot highlighting the approximate location of the applicant's request. Just kind of to zoom in, one of the questions was the judicial building or the law enforcement building is located to the northeast of the proposed tower. Talked a little bit about the neighborhood and where this project is and proximity to those neighborhoods, and we won't labor this too much. As I talked about, the property currently is zoned IG. The plan recommends C4 zoning, and as I also previously stated, communication towers are actually allowed through the same process as special use permit in the commercial districts as well as the industrial districts. And I touched on some of this already. The findings of fact that you find in the staff report are outlined individually, and they're again repeated here. These findings of fact are just a little bit different than what you would typically find in your rezoning requests, so where it talks about comprehensive plan and it talks about neighborhood plan, those are not findings that are part of the special use permit application as a whole. For communication towers, there are additional requirements or considerations that the city commission is charged with considering. Height, proximity of residential structures and district boundaries, the engineering requirements limiting the placement of the communication facilities in other areas, adjacent and nearby properties, as well as any type of stealth design. Although our code does not provide us a lot of guidance about stealth, monopoles are the preferred structure type over, say, a tower with a guide. Availability and suitable existing telecommunication towers that are in the area, which we have covered, we have covered each of these additional criteria in the staff report as well. And then the question of telecommunication towers facilitating the maximum utilization, and that has to do with being able to co-locate other equipment on a tower in the future. If you bring that tower height down, you do start to limit the ability to co-locate. So shorter tower, you're probably going to end up with more requests to achieve the same kind of thing, because the structure just doesn't have the height. Staff's recommendation was for approval to the planning commission, subject to conditions. That recommendation was forwarded to you by a vote of eight to zero for approval, subject to those conditions. And that was the addition of the buffer. That was, sorry, a little bit more detail about the proposed lighting. Lighting is very typical to be provided at the shelter buildings over the doors. We shall make sure that any lighting that is associated with the structure has a full cutoff feature and meets our requirements for being directed downward. You did receive a protest petition on this project, and that does require you to have a certain action if you are to approve this request. It does require that supermajority vote. This slide, and you have an attachment in your packet that highlights where those properties that were included in the valid protest. You received additional communication of many other residents and community members that also indicated their opposition to the proposed request, but they're not part of this particular protest. Your options tonight are to approve the request, which will require four votes. To approve the request with conditions, you may add or modify conditions. Again, that will require four votes. You could return the request back to the planning commission, which would take a simple majority, or you could deny the request, which again would require four votes. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this item. Sorry, I was wrong.
Questions? Thank you, Sandy.
I have two questions, and maybe the applicant might need to answer those. What's the risk that this will not fall within the, or what is the certainty this will not fall within the projected fall zone? And how do they determine that this did not affect property values?
I'll let the applicant talk about the engineering integrity of that tower. It's my understanding from review of the literature and the research, these types of towers very, very rarely fail, so they would have to provide the necessary engineering documentation that it's going to collapse or fall. I think they tend to bend more than to fall. As far as property value impacts, that's not some, an element that staff reviews. That's, that's between appraisers and property owners, and I've been told many times by appraisers, it's not an exact science as far as the value goes.
One of the criteria that it didn't affect property values, wasn't it?
I don't.
Maybe I misread that.
I don't think so. I don't think that's a criteria. I think Randy has some comments for him as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Randy Larkin, Senior Assistant City Attorney. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Telecommunications Act of 1996, give a brief overview and what impact it has and what you can and cannot consider in light of tonight's application. Section 704 of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 provides certain statutory protections to applicants seeking a permit for a telecommunications tower. Protections are in addition to the normal protections of due process, equal protection, state zoning laws, and city code. Now, without, although they don't completely preempt the city's ability or city commission's authority to regulate the location telecommunications towers based on health, safety, and welfare, or the regular zoning requirements such as height, setback, the zoning of the property, or the nature of surrounding properties, the act does provide five separate protections for the neighborhood, for applicants. First, the decision has to be made in a competitively neutral manner. Can't favor one telecommunications provider over another. Second, the city can't effectively ban telecommunications towers by zoning them out of the city. You have to, they have to be allowed somewhere in the city. Third, an application for a telecommunications tower has to be acted on in a reasonable amount of time. We can't deny them by sitting on them or deferring them indefinitely. Fourth, where the applicant demonstrates that the radio frequency emissions from the proposed tower fall within FCC limits, and the governing body cannot consider health concerns when making this decision. And finally, if, if there is a denial of an application, then it has to be based on substantial evidence, and there has to be a written findings forwarded to the applicant. And by substantial evidence, it means more than a mere centilla of evidence. It is relevant evidence as a reasonable mind might accept to support a conclusion. So I stand for any questions, if you have any.
Evidence of city attorney. So we got all that latitude, right?
Just checking.
It's huge.
Yeah, okay. Sandy, question on the, the search ring map, is, that's something that I should ask the applicant about?
I'll, is there a search ring?
Okay. Okay, that's fine. Okay, are there any other questions of staff?
Just one other question. Item number three, whether the proposed use will cause substantial diminution in value of other property in the neighborhood in which it is to be located.
Right.
I thought that was my question.
It was. And that, that criteria does exist, and there has been no study presented either way in terms of whether it would diminish the property values of surrounding neighborhoods. My personal experience with this and with speaking with appraisers is that it does not diminish property values. They're integrated into neighborhoods, and they're kind of absorbed into the system, and it doesn't have much effect, but there's been no study. It's been inconclusive in terms of whether or not it would or could, or even what the history is in Lawrence of that situation.
My concern was the use of the word mitigation. Mitigation has nothing to do with, to mitigate means to make it less. That was not the question, and I didn't think that the answer was, gave us any information.
Okay.
Scott, then a question, just to get an idea on how high 120 feet is, and I appreciate, you know, the pictures and putting that tower in there. Compared to, say, like the elevators to the south, or even our tower at the fire station there in the 1900 block of Haskell.
We did a rough estimate of the grain elevator to be about 118 feet. That's what Jeff Crick was looking at in some of the modeling. I don't have an idea of the water tower height. I'd have to do some other checking to find those heights for you.
118, it's 10 foot. Four stories. That tower that we have.
I'm just thinking about the Training Tower.
Training Tower, four or five stories probably, so.
So 50, 60 feet, maybe?
60 feet.
Okay. Okay. No other questions of staff? We'll go on to the applicant.
Sure.
Turn the overhead on. Or? There we go. I've got it. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Scott Gobel. I represent Verizon Wireless, the applicant, and Steve Udaley, the property owner. My business address is 574 South Barn Stable in Nixon, Missouri. And thank you, Sandy, for the comprehensive report. I'd like to.
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
What is your profession? Are you an engineer?
I'm an independent real estate contractor.
Okay, thank you.
I do site acquisition for all of the major carriers. I do site acquisition for all of the major carriers. In this case, Verizon. I'd like to speak with you about our efforts to find a suitable location for Verizon. And then, of course, answer any questions. This overhead represents the original search area that was issued by Verizon's RF engineering team. The search area has boundaries on the north side, that is East 13th Street. The east boundary is Buleen, the southeast 19th Street, and the west boundary Kentucky Street. You can see this flag right here, which was engineering's ideal location. That's where they would like us to find them, a site to build 120-foot-tall tower. This next overhead is the same search area overlaid on the city zoning map. You'll notice, I'm sure you remember this from everything you've read in the packet plus what Sandy has just went over, virtually everything inside this circle is residential. When we started our search for suitable locations, we, of course, studied the city development code very closely, met with staff. We determined that the most likely zoning districts to get a conditional use permit approved for a tower would be in the industrially zoned area. I want to assure you that we always look for existing structures that are co-locatable that will meet our height objectives. We did look at the grain elevator. We did speak with the owners of the grain elevator, which if I recall correctly, was a co-op. We didn't get too far along in negotiations with them because we asked our RF engineering group to run that location and analyze it for its usability. That grain elevator, as you know, is south of 19th Street, and it's somewhere down about where you can see my pointer here. Engineering ran that at 200 feet. And we ran that as if we were going to build a new tower because the grain elevator is not tall enough for our use in that location. It's outside of the ring. Engineering basically came back and said, look, we need to have something inside this ring, or it's not going to work for our coverage objectives. Here is that same before the proposed tower on Steve U. Daly's property would be built and turned on, the same coverage density map that Sandy showed you in an earlier slide. And I really wanted to put this back up to point out that Verizon has existing antenna sites located around our search area. Not only are we trying to improve the existing coverage inside and near the outside boundaries of that search area by developing a new antenna site, we're also trying to hand off capacity on overloaded sites that surround this particular search ring. And everywhere you see on this map a name that's got white in the background, Downtown Lawrence, for example, Oriad, if I'm saying that correctly, Bullwinkles, East Lawrence, those are existing antenna, Verizon antenna sites that we are trying to offload. If we get too far north, south, east, or west within our search area, we're diminishing our ability to hand off capacity on those other existing Verizon antenna sites. Barker is in, Barker is what we would call this site if we are successful in building it. The proposed tower, I should say, on Mr. U. Daly's property, if we're successful in building it, we feel like is the best location and the closest to the center of the target or the center of the search ring, the closest to the target that we felt like was worthy of bringing to you for consideration for approval because it is industrial. I've been asked if we had looked at a county-owned tower that's at the law enforcement center. I submitted a report to Sandy, which I know she has gotten to you within the last day or two. I wanted to show you that we did not originally consider it when we were doing our search because it is too far away. I'm sorry. This is the location of the law enforcement tower. It's a 200-foot monopole. Again, our search ring, in this, in this instance, it's in blue, and then our proposed tower site. You can see this arrow between here and that tower is .83, miles away.
Gentlemen, excuse me a minute. Trying, trying to hear this man. Michael, James, trying to hear this man, sir.
Although we didn't analyze this tower originally because it was obviously too far away, since it was brought up with, since the planning, planning commission hearing, we did go ahead and have RF engineering analyze it. This is a photograph of that tower. It is a 200, actually 199-foot monopole tower. Everything between the very top of the tower and this location is occupied with antennas. There are tall, omnidirectional antennas mounted in these areas. So even though in that picture it's hard to see them, they are there, and that takes up space that we could not put antennas because there would be, it would cause conflict between the two technologies. So the tallest that we were able to determine we could go on this tower is approximately 120 feet. We ran the analysis at 120 feet. We came up with this propagation map, which shows the coverage. It does not adequately improve our coverage of zooming. And that tower is just frankly too close to Downtown Lawrence for us to use it, meet our coverage objectives. And I'll show you one more time the map that shows the improvement in coverage if we're successful in getting the tower turned on on Mr. U. Daly's property at 120 feet. And that's really everything I wanted to go over. Sandy covered everything else pretty well. I know there's going to be a lot of questions, so do you want to ask any questions now, or do you have something different?
Yeah, we'll get, get them now. Questions?
Could you explain to me why site number two did not work out?
Site number?
Salvation Army.
Salvation Army, while we did talk with the owners, and they expressed some possible interest in leasing us ground, it wasn't as close to the center of the search target as Mr. U. Daly's property. Mr. U. Daly's property worked better for us.
I noticed that when the little mark was on there, and I don't know if that's significant or not, that when the mark was on there where the pole would go is on the south side, which was further away. What would happen if it were, is that where the information was, or?
I don't know which mark number two you're referring to.
Well, there is.
But, well, let me just say this.
On the simulation drawings.
Oh. Is that where it had to meet the 60-foot setback all the way around if it was on that side?
Are you talking about the photo simulations?
Uh huh.
That was just where they took the photos from.
Right. The perspective.
Oh, is that all that was?
That's all that was.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, on photo simulation overview, those photo locations is where the photographer was standing, shooting toward the tower, and we just tried to take them from all, from different areas around the proposed tower location. But we did talk with the people that own that property and looked at potentially trying to do something with a new tower there. And even though it is in, it is just right outside the search area, our engineering team came back, and they said that Mr. U. Daly's property would work much better, which is why we brought that to you.
It's within the search area, though, right?
No, it's actually right outside.
Okay, could you show that? Because I, when I looked at it, it looks like it was in the search area.
This is the search area in red.
Yes.
And this yellow pushpin is the proposed power site on Mr. U. Daly's property. This is the parcel of land that is owned by the Salvation Army, if you can see that.
So his, question that I would have is the search ring map, as it's laid out there, that is not the service area, correct? That is just the most optimum location as to where the tower ought to be?
We are tasked with finding an antenna location as close to the center of that as possible to best meet Verizon's coverage objectives.
And what does it take to move that ring?
This ring would not be able to be moved and accomplish what Verizon is trying to accomplish because as you could see in the previous slide, they already have existing antenna sites surrounding that search ring. Moving this search ring or this search area any farther north is going to get too close to these antenna sites. Any farther west is going to get too close to these antenna sites. Any more south or east is going to get too close to East Lawrence antenna site. We need to be somewhere inside that circle. That's as simple as that.
Can I come back to the Salvation Army? When I look at my map, 1725 Buleen Avenue, it's definitely, the Salvation Army is definitely within the search circle. It's not outside of it. The northwest corner is well within, probably 100 feet within 80 feet, probably 80 to 100 feet within the search circle.
The map you're looking at may not have a search.
The map I'm looking at is different than the one that you have drawn up there. This has a lot of yellow and green as color.
Derek, keep moving that map up, would you please?
That map's fine.
I don't, I'm not sure who did this map. Slide it up on the screen, so.
Takes in the whole.
On this map, the Salvation Army, the northwest corner is shown within the circle. On the actual search area map, this is the official map that was generated by Radio Frequency Engineering. If we found that spot on this map, you would notice that it was right outside. But I'm not saying Salvation Army didn't work, even though it might be on the edge just inside or just outside the search ring. It did not work as well as Mr. U. Daly's property. Mr. U. Daly's property met the development code requirements, and that's why we brought Mr. U. Daly's property to planning commission for consideration.
So is, is, is the map that he just took down that he's using different than the one the planning commission saw and has been forwarded to us? Is, it's the same map?
That's the same map. The map that's up on the screen right now was one that we received yesterday, April 4th.
This one?
Yes.
And that thing is to scale to the yellow one that was just up there?
I have not made that comparison, I don't know.
Well, as I see the search ring map on the yellow one, it looks like the western, maybe 15, 20% of the Salvation Army property is with inside that search ring.
You're referring again to this one?
It's called the search ring map?
Yeah.
On the handouts?
This is search ring map.
We have two search rings, but they're not consistent.
No, they're not the same.
Which one do we believe?
They're close. This is the map that came from Radio Frequency Engineering. This is a map that I put together, using the zoning maps that's available online, converting it to WPS and putting this circle.
But which, excuse me, excuse me. Which one did the planning commission see?
The previous map. That is the map that the planning commission saw.
And then that one there shows that about 15 to 20% of the Salvation Army property could be used as, you know, to hold this particular tower, correct?
We, we did discuss actually that property during Crease of Hiddle as a possible option. It does have residential zoning. So the code prefers non-residential zoning to residential.
And so anything else that is outside this search area ring will not meet the objective of Verizon, correct?
No, I won't say that. I will say that Mr. U. Daly's property is the closest to the target. It meets the development code requirements, and that's why we brought that to you. We had talked to other people in this industrially zoned area that's purple. Several said they weren't interested in leasing ground for a tower on their property.
How about at the fire, the old fire station? That's just to the south of 19th.
The only place we went south of 19th that I can recall was the grain elevator.
That's pretty far south. I'm just pulling land out of the air. I think it's a, I think it's a good site, but anyway, that's not what we're considering tonight.
Well, keep in mind, we're trying to get as close to the center of the search area as possible. Mr. U. Daly's property makes the most sense for Verizon in that, the way it's zoned.
I understand, sir. And, and one thing that I see is I want to make sure that the planning commission saw exactly what we're seeing tonight, and I want to make sure that we are, you know, trying to do, make sure that you're trying to give coverage to everyone that lives in this area. Appears to me that that's what the map's doing. But is there another site that hasn't been considered tonight that maybe meets, you know, those requirements, but maybe outside that ring? And, you know, that, that's all I'm asking right here. Okay? So, thanks. Any other questions?
There were many comments brought up in the emails we got from residents about, asking about the grain elevator. I know you indicated clearly that it's outside of the, what the engineers indicated needed to be the certain, the ring of area that would help offload these calls and provide the service upgrades that Verizon's looking for, correct?
That is correct.
So there's no, so was, why would they continue to bring it up if it was made clear that that was not a suitable location? Did that come up at the planning commission meeting when you were there, and did you make it clear?
Yes, we talked about the grain elevator at the planning commission.
And there was other comments about there being possible interference from, or it wasn't, actually, one of the reviews by the engineer said it was not suitable from a structural standpoint? Is that right?
We wouldn't choose to go on, put our antennas on the grain elevator for environmental reasons and because it's not tall enough. Going that far from the center of this search area, we would have to go taller than 120 feet, which is, the grain elevator's about that at the very tallest height. We did analyze it, as I said before, at 200 feet, and it did not work for our coverage objectives.
And you said, what's the environmental reason why you wouldn't put?
Grain elevators have their own set of concerns. Asbestos in the building because they're so old.
Oh, I see.
And dust and ignition combustion issues.
I understand, thank you.
That we took the light to go on there if we can avoid it.
Thank you.
Chairman?
That's quite ironic that, that we can take into consideration health, safety-related risks, putting something on a grain elevator, but not when it comes to putting something near citizens' homes. Got to love the federal government. You know, I'll just, I'll just share, I'll just share my opinion now, if that's okay. I've been trying to research because I, in the gender review meeting yesterday, we were basically told that, that, you know, we had, we had to have a legally defensible way of, of, you know, coming at this rather than making it about health and safety and thanks to whoever provided the health effects from cell phone tower radiation, but according to those FCC regulations, we can't even take this into consideration. But, there was a Supreme, uh, excuse me, a district court case in Mexico that I found, Comas versus the city of Santa Fe, and the Supreme Court of New Mexico awarded damages for the perceived decline, perceived decline in property value resulting from a source of stigma, even when no objective evidence demonstrated that the perceived nuisance was unsafe and when market loss was not proven by comparable sales data. The National Association of Realtors, I found this interesting, actually talks about the impact that these types of towers have on property values or the perceived impact or nuisance value that they have on property values. And there is absolutely no way in the world, not only because I don't think that there's been due diligence done on this with, with looking at other sites, but there's absolutely no way in the world that this is a good location for this, for this tower. And, and in relationship to, to, you know, having a Supreme Court in New Mexico case that, that if, if in fact the majority of the commission, super majority of the commission wishes to deny this, we're, we're protected. I just found that this afternoon, so I hadn't had a chance to bounce it off Tony, but, but I did read through the case and while I'm not an attorney, I think I got the gist of it. But, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to get that out for, you know, because I know that a lot of folks are, you know, a lot of folks are here to talk about it and from the way that it's sounding, I'm, I'm not sure that this is going to pass, frankly.
Yes, Scott.
Your proposed tower is 120 feet tall, did I get that right?
That's correct.
120 feet. I may show my ignorance of radio waves and towers, et cetera, but seems to me like the higher you go, the more coverage you get in a tower. That's why we see radio towers that transmit great distances on our AM and FM radio and is that true with cell phones too?
That is not true. There's a lot of different things that come into consideration. There's communications with the other towers and the way a cellular network operates. There are frequency issues. Every carrier has different height variable requirements based on the frequencies that they have, that their license to utilize. Different heights affect different types of use of that cell tower, whether it's a voice call or a data call or a data, data use. There is just not one rule that the higher you go, the better.
Thank you.
I had had a question earlier. What is the probability that this will fall within the enclosure area?
Will...
Is it 100% or?
Yes, it's 100%. We'll provide engineering data to back that up and I can also guarantee 100% that if the tower is ever subjected to wind loads, strong enough to make the tower fail and collapse upon itself, even if it were to collapse on the concrete foundation where the metal building would have been before it was blown away, that won't happen.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Global, a long time ago, we talked about these towers and, and the, you know, ice would form on them during the wintertime. That's still possible? And, and just everything that you've been involved with, you had any problems with icing on these things?
Never.
Never?
Ice will form on antennas on the tower, but by the time it melts enough to disengage from that overhead, it's soft and doesn't have any, there's no danger of it being sharp or heavy enough to cause any damage.
Okay. You said, uh, one of the reasons that you couldn't move or you couldn't consider things to the south of the search ring was because it gets too close to your East Lawrence site?
And too far away from the two sites that we're trying to offload to the north.
Okay, so one of the things is it's too close to the East Lawrence site. What does that mean? Is it going to have an effect on, you know, these things working?
What it really affects is it gets, maybe I said it wrong, it's not that it got, it gets too close to those other sites, it gets too far away from the sites on the other side of the search area.
Okay, the reason that I ask that is if it has an effect on, on the existing site in East Lawrence, does it have an effect like on our fire station that's pretty close to that site also?
No, it won't have any effect on any other antenna sites that are being operated under different frequencies by other owners. Fire station, AT&amp;T, Sprint, no effect on any of those other communities.
Only unto yourself.
Only Verizon equipment.
Okay. Guys, you have any other questions at this point? Because I, I mean, I appreciate the work that's been done here, but, you know, looking at this, and I, I know we'll get to public comment a little bit, I, knowing that we have, you know, possibly a site to the south, maybe doesn't meet it, you can't tell, you tell me that we can't move that ring, you know, I would like to have that considered on, on city-owned property as a possibility, but, because you have a tall structure there that it may blend into, I don't know. But, I think that there's some possibilities there, but I just, I have concern about this site. I'll just lay that out there. The, I guess Randy, the reasonableness of, or Tony, the reasonableness of the timing of the application sounded open-ended to me, but the decision has to be made and, like, is it a period of days, minutes?
It depends on the factors and circumstances of the case. Sometimes, typically it's 90 days, sometimes like that, I've seen that mentioned. Depending on circumstances of the case, it, it's been extended out to two years. So, it's just, you know, depending on whether the courts think the city's dragging its feet.
Okay. Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Well, I guess we'll take some public comment unless we've all heard everything. Okay, if we could have public comment, three minutes on the comments, we'd love to hear them. If we could have your name and address, that would be great.
Start the clock. I'm James Grauerholtz. It's good to see you. I won't ask if you miss me. I've called out of retirement for the simple fact that this is right next to the Burrows Creek Park and Trail and that I stand for William Burrows and that legacy and that park and that trail and the east side in general because I'm the Burrows Estate. I'm a 30-plus-year resident of Burke Creek Neighborhood, about three blocks from this proposed site, and I also care about Barker Neighborhood because on Leonard Avenue, south of 19th Street in the Barker Neighborhood, is 1927 Leonard, the Zinn Burrows House, a city historic landmark and a nonprofit project of the Burrows Estate. And I want to underscore nonprofit. It's just one donor and hundreds and hundreds of visitors. Well, I have one point to make, I already made it in writing, I'm really here as a courtesy to take your questions if you have them. I do have one little thing to add, but my point is simply, I do, having seen everything that I think, that the public has seen and the commission has seen, I don't understand why the grain elevator is unsatisfactory. I really, Mr. Global kindly mentioned that it was not tall enough, but it's actually taller than the monopole that they proposed at 1725 Buleen, right? I mean, he said it's 120 or so, I think it's 130, 140, depending, anyway, it's, yes, it's a little bit out of the search ring, but it is, the elevators are already tall enough. And if the, I can see where grain dust or even explosion, grain dust explosion risk, although since I live next door, I'm glad we haven't had one, I can see where that should be taken into consideration. And I think we better get on the line to Sprint next door right away and tell them to go check all of their, like, eight antenna units on top of the grain elevators and make sure that they're safe from grain dust. So, in summation, I don't feel that this case has been made, the burden of proof has not been met. Pardon me? And I, I can't see how you could vote to say that they have proved they cannot collocate. I might add that since they're adding two places for future towers, you might want to know that those can rent for $3,000 to $5,000 a month. Of course, we have them there so we don't have to build more and more towers, but there is a payback. The whole cherry on the whole sundae is the permission to say that they can't collocate or choose another site. Thank you for listening. I have any, any questions?
Thanks, James.
No, thank you.
No, thanks. Other comment?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nancy Hubbell. My husband and I built, oh, in the Habitat Neighborhood, 909 LaSalle, well within the 200-foot radius of the cell tower, although it is apparently against Telecommunications Act of 1996 to discuss health information, to deny a cell tower location. I can legally protest the following three things. The loss of our property value, which has been proven that property value is lost in other communities. The incredible ugliness of having this protest tower in our backyard looming over us. And we can also protest against the irresponsibility of the City Planning Commission to approve this tower in opposition to the well-thought-out pre-planning of the Burrows Creek Recreational Corridor by a past city commission, in which we hope this city commission will rectify. As to health issues, don't call the police to take me away. There are hundreds of scientists and public health officials worldwide who are against cell towers in residential areas. In many other countries, including China, the allowance for the amount of output from a cell tower is 3,000 to 5,000 times less than the US allows. There are many excellent studies showing there are very bad physical side effects of living in a radio frequency microwave tower area. For a good overview, some of their studies, read the synopsis by Mount Shasta, Bioregional Ecological Center. I don't know why the government made a law to stop people from using health issues to fight against cell towers. If it looks like a duck and quacks like a duck, no law is going to prevent us from calling it a duck. So, we look to you, you who are here to protect us, here to take care of us, here to watch out for us. Sadly to say, we hope you'll have a close look at this 120-foot duck that has long, sharp teeth.
Now, business meeting, guys. Other public comment?
I'm Jane Live. I live at 1701 Buleen, down the block from where this is proposed to be built. I had some comments, but first I want to say in response to some things I've learned today from the Planning Commission, if I didn't live on that block, I would really think this is being built in an industrial area, even though you pointed out the residential environs. But I drive that street every day and the vacant lot you're talking about, which is next to the proposed site, butts the first of 10 tenants-to-homeowners houses. That, that man who lives there is within 100 feet of that tower. I'm within 300 feet of that tower. There is, the petition of 20 households went to the city commission as the legal petition. I also have 59 other names I'd like to present and earlier this week, another 100 names were given already. Not from just the immediate neighborhood, but just our friends and people who care about our community. What I would like to say is that in this, I learned about the Burrows Creek Corridor Plan, which is my backyard, and I watched the use that keeps growing all the time. And in that corridor plan, which I read, and had trouble understanding all the language, what came to me was it said, "This plan takes an industrial area and we want to move it into residential and commercial use in conjunction with this park use." And so, this, building this tower, even though technically it is still zoned industrial, that whole plan was to move things out of industry into our residential neighborhood. And if you drive around these surrounding blocks, you will know that we are a neighborhood. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Other comment?
Good evening, I'm Martha Chapin. I'm the HOA president for the Woods on 19th, not Villa Woods, the Woods on 19th. I had a five-minute speech, but I'll make this short. The Appraisal Institute, the largest global professional membership organization for appraisers throughout the world, educated its members that a cell tower should, in fact, cause a decrease in home value. As one realtor put it, "It is the kiss of death for real estate values." In our neighborhood, our current home values, I took it off the Douglas County tax records, our homes are valued at 37 homeowners at $5,816,050. Don't ask me where the 50 came from. Our homeowners pay a total of $85,000 in annual taxes. What we learned in our research was from one of the top researchers in this area, was home values can be affected 10 to 20%, 25%, sorry. Our lowest, least expensive house in the woods is $142,250. So, the least amount on 10%, on 10% would be $14,250 in home value loss. Our most expensive home in the development is $166,700 at a 25% loss. That's $41,675,000, which would put most of our residents upside down in their mortgage. That's substantial. There is of course a much simpler solution, both AT&amp;T and Verizon offer microcell wireless cell signal booster tower antennas. The Verizon Wireless Network Extender costs $249 as of June 2013. You need to have a broadband internet connection, providing at least one MBS bandwidth and a place near a window where you can set it so that it can acquire a GPS signal. The article on this device indicates some Verizon customers have even been able to get an extender for free by complaining to Verizon customer service. However, when I went through our neighborhood to get at least 29 signatures on our protest petition, I did ask our residents who had Verizon, "How was their service?" And two of them, they said they loved Verizon, no drop calls. So, our area gets excellent service. Let me think about, oh, I brought the prop, the balloon. I went down and bought a big balloon, orange, and put a 120-foot tether on it because I wanted to take pictures and see what's it going to look like from our neighborhood. Unfortunately, it was a 12 mile an hour wind, so it was at a 45-degree angle. But, I still got the pictures, it's still visible from every part of our neighborhood. So, and also I have the Verizon maps, which are in your packets from the internet that showed complete coverage in Kansas, complete coverage in Lawrence, and complete coverage in our neighborhood. So, we ask you... So we ask you and the Woods to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comment?
Is there something else?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Who do I give this to?
You can just give it... Give it to Scott.
Hello, I'm Joshua Montgomery. I own and operate Wicked Broadband here in Lawrence, Kansas. Uh, we have eight tower sites in the community, including equipment on the Harper Tower site and the Law Enforcement Center Tower site north of this site. Uh, I just wanted to make a couple of quick comments. Uh, I think that the gentleman from Verizon might have been mistaken in that the second tier of LEC is not used. So their analysis of that tower site, uh, they did it at the wrong height. Uh, I spent a lot of time up there. It's definitely not being used. Uh, the second comment I wanted to make was, uh, it's probably, uh, not a huge deal to cover this area with a south sector off of LEC and a north sector off that grain elevator. You'd split it and have half the coverage come from the north and half from the south. Verizon could absolutely pull that off. Uh, and then finally, uh, if you had a common carriage fiber network, uh, you would be able to backhaul, uh, what's called a distributed antenna system in this neighborhood. It's similar to what Next G put in in southwest Lawrence for Sprint and what AT&amp;T uses on the University of Kansas campus. Uh, that system uses a series of small antennas installed on utility poles. Uh, they're then connected to a fiber optic network, uh, and that hauls the traffic back into a, uh, central location where it's switched. Uh, that's working really well for Sprint in, um, southwest Lawrence. It's working really well for AT&amp;T, and it would work in this neighborhood too. But of course, you have to have the fiber in the group. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, ma'am.
Bonnie Effman, four oh eight Johnson Avenue. What seems obvious to me is that this whole thing is based on a false premise of need. We are shown this ring, and okay, we need this here. I don't really accept that. I live in the middle of that ring. I'm a Verizon customer. I have no problem with Verizon coverage. I have not run into anyone else in my neighborhood that does. Uh, saying we need it doesn't make it so. Uh, to me, this proposal is so wrong on so many levels that it's really hard to know where to start. I feel so strongly about this that I have committed time and energy to speaking with neighbors and friends, gathering seventy signatures personally against the proposal in this process. To me, this is not a "not in my backyard" issue. It doesn't belong in anybody's backyard. I believe that a tower of this magnitude would best be located outside of semi-limit... city limits. It definitely does not belong immediately adjacent to residences or adjacent to Boroughs Creek Trail. Granting this supplement... This S U P would be in direct violation of the Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan, which calls for less intensive commercial zoning in this area, as many other people have mentioned. Uh, the tower would be a step in the opposite direction, intensifying industrial zoning. I don't understand the purpose of creating and agreeing on a plan if it can be so easily disreg... disregarded. That just does not make sense to me. A lot of time and effort went into that plan, and it was agreed upon, as I understand it. I am concerned, as are many, about how this would affect property values. It just seems like a justice issue, just not fair to people who happen to live where this proposal comes up. Uh, I'm also extremely concerned about the well-documented health aspects of living in close proximity to these transmitters. To say we can't consider this does bizarre. Uh, in short, I hope that you will take a stand for the neighborhoods in opposition to the special use request. And somehow, the word "special use" means, you know, there's the opportunity to deny as well as there is the opportunity to accept. It's a special use. It's not a given that this has to be approved. Thank you.
Thanks, Bonnie. Okay.
The issue at hand here is whether or not to grant a code variance to the applicant to construct the cell tower above the height restriction set for this site. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm Russell Livingston. Uh, bestowing this special privilege to the applicants is not a zero-sum event. What is given freely without compensation is taken from the surrounding property values and hence the respective owners. I'm here tonight to address the applicant's claim that the industrial character of our neighborhood suits the proposed construction. This area has been zoned and platted as residential and is primarily residential at this time. The removal of the rail spur in nineteen eighty-seven ended most of the industrial use in this area and began the transition to a neighborhood of moderately priced homes. The Villa Woods development of thirty-seven homes gave the city several hundred feet of rideaway to the rails and added several acres to the park system. The footbridge at Cornell Park was built to connect the adjoining neighborhoods. Subsequently, the Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan arose. On the east side of the trail, many infill lots directly adjacent to the proposed tower site have been used for low-income housing as a part of the tenants-to-homeowners and Habitat for Humanity programs. The citizens in these homes would be adversely affected by the economic blight created by the proposed structure and the possible life, safety, and negative health impacts. Once again, our lower-income citizens are being forced into an unfavorable situation. Verizon claims that they... The proposed site is the only site that suits their construction. Surely, we don't believe that a multinational company is so poorly managed that they lack a contingency plan. There are several other suitable locations within the proposed construction radius. I urge you to deny the special zoning needed in favor of the tower construction in the proposed location and protect the citizens of a lower socio-economic residential neighborhood. The Boroughs Creek Trail is one of the most beautiful, highly utilized green spaces in the interior of the city. As a property owner in the neighborhood who regularly utilizes this community asset, I am opposed to this industrial misuse. Thank you.
Thanks. Appreciate it, Russell. Okay. I doubt we're going to get a whole lot of more different comments. Michael would be happy to take your comment, but I think, uh, the commission probably has got a direction of the, uh, feeling of the neighborhood in Barker. Please, Michael. I'm not declining anybody else who wants to speak, but I got a pretty good idea here. Here he is.
Michael Allman. I'm speaking for the neighborhood. Um, I have five minutes to get through.
Three minutes. Three minutes. You'll be fine, Michael.
I will explain how the microwave tower proposal violates the vision of the neighborhoods of Barker, Brook Creek, and Villa Woods and the Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan that grew from that vision. Most people don't realize that the Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan has two major goals. Uh, the main goal is residential infill because this is a land-use plan. Um, where's my, uh... How do I advance? I'm sorry. How do I advance? I'm losing time here.
Just say three words.
Uh, the second goal is the trail, but that is a, um, a means to, uh, establish the transition from this defunct industrial rail corridor to residential. This microwave tower would obstruct that transition. First, some background. The corridor between Ward Street and Nineteenth Street was planned and platted as all residential lots, still is. The southern half was rezoned by Mr. Zimmerman, Morton, and Scott at their request, um, because they had a vision for a rail industrial corridor. Uh, that, uh, vision never flourished and collapsed after the nineteen eighty-eight when the rail line was abandoned. The parcels there are too small by today's industrial standards, and the only remaining uses there are commercial uses. Staff was incorrect in saying these are industrial uses. They're not. Uh, here's the map from the Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan. It shows clearly, all that red is commercial uses: plumbing, supply, heating, air, auto repair. The current industrial zoning is a throwback to a bygone era. Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan designates this area for elimination of the industrial zoning. Reducing the industrial uses, like... Reintroducing industrial uses like a microwave tower only perpetuates industrial zoning. Uh... Right here. Here. Um, so how does land-use plan make a smooth transition? Through zoning amortization. Um, the plan actually says zoning should be modified to be consistent with the existing use, which we know is commercial use. The plan also says a future development of industrially-zoned areas should be scrutinized for neighborhood compatibility. Boroughs Creek Corridor Plan specifically lists this to be, uh, commercial zoning C N two. However, none of this was mentioned in the staff report, the Planning Commission, uh, just barely mentioned tonight, but for, for your benefit. This microtower... Microwave tower will intensify the industrial uses. Uh, it's immediately adjacent to residential zoning, which isn't allowed in our zoning code. It's a... It's a, um, anomaly of the, um, the original industrial zoning. So, uh, finally, there's two-fold purpose from any land-use plan: the community goals and the predictability that those plans convey to everybody who invests in the area. Uh, less intensive land use is the central goal, and we need predictability to protect neighborhood investments and neighborhood assets. Um, one of the best examples of the neighborhood assets is the Borough... The, um, Tenants-to-Homeowners two thousand eight Best of Best H U D Award. This is affordable workforce... workforce homes. Lawrence trumpets these homes all the time. We need to protect those investments. The city of Lawrence also invested approximately three million dollars in the trail. We need to protect that investment. It's clear from other testimony, property values need to be protected as well.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Okay. One last...
I have some more, um, of these protest petitions that I wanted to drop off.
Okay.
There's about two pages of adult and the children wanted to know what we were doing, so they also signed. They wanted to sign petitions, so they put their own one in. And I had a lot to say about how, I guess we're not allowed to say that, but what I noticed when we were looking at...
Could we have your name, ma'am?
Sorry, my name is Tina Halliday, and I live in... On Elmwood Street on Thirteenth and Elmwood, in that same area. Um, what I noticed, um, when we had the chart was Verizon showed the green was commercial, very good coverage, a lot of yellow, which is residential and good. It had some pink, in-a-vehicle fair coverage, and a tiny bit of blue, which is poor outdoor coverage. The area that they're talking about is in yellow, which is residential, which is residential, which is good already. So I don't understand... That's just the point I want to make. I don't know why they have to do more and have green everywhere because they already have good coverage there. So I also agree with not having an extra tower up there if there's not needed. I think that more research needs to be done to look at some different areas, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Sorry, just going to leave you with that.
Okay.
That's a little request.
Thanks. That'd be the... Get the last word in. That's right. Okay, anyone else? Okay.
Carrie Altenburn. Uh, I'm currently the, uh, Barker Neighborhood Association president, but I'm not here speaking tonight for the Barker neighborhood. We haven't actually taken official position on that. We haven't met. But, uh, what I've... I've heard tonight, uh, I think Verizon is saying it has a problem, and it wants us to fix it for them by letting them do this. Uh, a problem that they've come up with a solution that's easy for them, which is to put this tower here. Uh, however, we've heard at least one alternate, uh, splitting use, uh, the north-south, having part of the... Part of it come from the grain elevator, part of it come from the one by the Judicial Center, and that's just one, uh, to me, uh, option, it would seem. Uh, it seems like this... If there really is an issue here, uh, really is a problem, uh, they need to be a little more, uh, innovative in the solution because the fact that this tower, uh, would be an eyesore and a definite detriment to, uh, a number of neighborhoods in the city. So I think you should, uh, tell them... Send it back to them and say, "You want... If you want good coverage, if you're saying the coverage isn't good enough in this area, come up with something that will solve your problem, but will also not make us live with something that is detrimental to Lawrence."
Thank you. Last comment, ma'am.
My name is Sharon Vaughn. I live at twelve forty-two Prairie Avenue. I've been crossing off of my list everything that everybody else has said first, so I have very little. Um, I have a question of the commission first. In the plans that I looked at for, um, this project, they included a twelve-foot chain-length fence with two strands of barbed wire at the top. Do the plans still include that?
Yes.
Okay. And the reason I was asking that is because I looked at the planning department's buffering plan, and it just had to do with some evergreen planting. So I'm wondering how a barbed wire twelve-foot fence could possibly be buffered against the neighborhood. And I find it surprising that the only place, um, is a residential neighborhood that they can possibly put that, but when I looked at all the charts, I saw that the only place they can put it is very close to the edge of their target. And if it's that close to the edge of their target, a hundred feet over is the Salvation Army, and I don't know, maybe a hundred yards is the, um, fire department that you mentioned. And I was wondering what to do because I had read so many conflicting comments about this whole thing, so I drove out there this afternoon, and I drove around the area. And it is hugely residential. It's true that there is some leftover industrial stuff that maybe a heating company works or whatever, but it's like this big compared to the rest of this neighborhood. And, um, I also read something else that I really appreciated from Verizon. It says, "They say they have needs and desires of the surrounding community, and they want to be a good neighbor, and I would just ask them to be a good neighbor now and to explore some of the alternatives that they might be able to find." Thank you.
Thanks, ma'am. Okay.
Here, it's a six-foot fence.
Six-foot fence. Sharon, did you hear that? It's a six-foot fence?
Well, there's an existing six-foot fence.
Well, this is...
What I read in the, um, in the engineering drawings is twelve-foot.
Okay.
Six.
It's six-foot. Okay. Okay. I think I'll bring this back to the commission. I want to say one thing on behalf of the commission. I want to thank everybody for their emails, their comments that we've received. All of it's been very helpful in, um, uh, in helping to make the decision that we're about to make. Uh, so thank you all very much for your time. Uh, staff, thank you for all of the information that you've provided and also the applicant. So at this point, we are back to the, uh, commission and, and looking at, um, considering the special use permit, uh, for a new one-hundred-and-twenty thou... or one-hundred-and-twenty-foot Verizon Wireless Communication Tower located at seventeen twenty-five Bulleen Avenue. Um...
No loss.
Well, I think, you know, I've, um...
Flexing your wrist.
Looking at the great number of things, uh, you know, that we have been asked to consider tonight on deciding whether or not this should be... Should be granted, you know? We have to go back and we have to look at the things that, um, were presented to us by the city attorney's office. But at the same time, I hold, um, I... I believe it is important that we still, in all of this, represent our community. Uh, I do believe, um, when we look at this particular area and I look at the amount of residential zoned real estate that is in this area, I do not think that this is compatible. zoned real estate that is in this area, I do not think that this is compatible and is something that shouldn't be considered, because here again, it just does not fit the neighborhood in which it is in. We have looked at this on, you know, not this particular application, but this type of, you know, zoning request, and in this case, special use permit, on whether or not it's appropriate to be at this location. My particular feeling is, is because of the residential neighborhood, the question about the effect on property values as to, I cannot in good conscience vote in support of this, knowing that there may be a negative effect on somebody's property value of the most important thing, that they will actually possess throughout time, that being their home. So with that, I cannot support the request.
I concur with that. In addition, it seems like the plan, the spirit of the plan is being challenged here. It just doesn't seem like the neighborhood plan in place, and I know how much work goes into those plans, that then to come in with an industrial-style antenna is not compatible with the desire of how that plan was written. And I just feel like there's probably other sites, or probably other sites that'll work better than what this is, how this is going to work with the neighborhood. So I think we just, you know, need to direct to Verizon and go look and find out what other possibilities there are. There probably are other technological kinds of actions that can take place to accomplish what they're trying to do. Obviously, I always say in our business is your first deal is your best deal for you. If the customer takes it up, then hey, you've just scored a big victory. But I'm of the opinion that that's probably their best hand, and they'd like to have that approved by us, but also, as someone said, they probably have a fallback plan or other solutions, maybe a little bit more expensive, maybe not just exactly the way they'd like it. But I'd say that they should go look and try and come back to us again. So I too am a Verizon customer, so whatever that means. So I'm not, obviously, from my comments, I'm not going to support the request tonight.
Okay. Anyone else?
Obviously, I have some concerns. I didn't agree with the information that we got from the planning commission when that was presented to them, and it said that there would be no decrease in property values. It just made that statement, but there wasn't any data or any information to back that up. So I have concerns with that. So that would mean the number one and number three items would be no's rather than yeses. And then I think there's a real possibility this could be at least located next, or in the land that's vacant by the Salvation Army. It's still within the area that can be done. And this is where the zoning is old zoning that just hasn't been changed, and the one property for the Salvation Army has been changed, but that just goes to show you that sometimes the industrial area is not the best area for it. In general, it would be, but in this particular case, I think most likely this has been changed so that the Salvation Army could buy it and develop it at some time. And I think that area to the northwest would be a reasonable area to do this, and it would be much further away from other residential areas. It would still be in the neighborhood, it'd still be within the zone, so I at least want that to be looked at and other possibilities, whether they be technological or whether they be physical structures. So I would recommend us go back to the planning commission to reevaluate based on those and plus the other comments that have been made by the other commissioners.
Okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Okay. Sandy Scott, would you put up again the actions that we can take and the number of votes it takes to do all of them? So there are four choices, gentlemen.
Will, can I...
Please.
Can I ask Commissioner Rudin a question? When you say turn it back to the planning commission, with what instructions?
We're answering the questions that the city commissioners have raised tonight. One is the residential character of this, and second is the fact that we don't have evidence that the property values are not decreased, and the third is that we don't know that there aren't other areas that can be used, or the fourth would be that there are other technological possibilities that could be used.
Okay, and the reason why I wanted to ask you that is it seems like it might be better just to deny the request and let them come back with a new plan. I mean, obviously, we're not in agreement with this site at all. I'm forecasting that we're not. So if you go back to the planning commission with those points, you're liable to get the same back again at a later moment. It seems like we've raised enough issues that it just needs to restart, and I guess I need to ask the staff about the ramifications of that in terms of their ability to file another SUP. Is there any restrictions on that?
If it's a different location, then that would be a new application that can do that. There would be no time period on that situation.
Okay, and any comments on outright denying it versus returning it to the planning commission?
Well, I agree. I think if we're going to stick with this particular location, I wouldn't want to turn it back to the commission to seek out other, to move the application from this site to another site. I think that would require either withdrawal or denial, and then a new application to get the process going again. If you wanted to look at specifics on this particular location, then it may demand a remand to the planning commission to look at this particular site.
Right. So if we send it back to the planning commission, it's not like a zoning application where it comes back and the number of votes are different for approval or denial or anything like that?
It would change the denial one that requires four votes to deny. The only reason it's required four votes to deny tonight is because that's contrary to the planning commission's recommendation. If it comes back, you can deny it with three votes. The other votes remain because of the protest petition.
Okay. Well, I would strongly suggest then that we look at item number four, which is to deny the request, and just do it that way.
Do we need to have findings of fact with the denial?
Yeah. We'll ask the city attorney's office to prepare findings of fact that we can vote on at our next meeting. Is it...
Yes. If it is denied, we would request that we be directed to prepare findings of fact, because that's one of the requirements of the Telecommunications Act of 1996 that we put in writing and it be supported by substantial evidence.
And you're able to get that from the comments that we've made, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So I move that we deny special use permit SUP 14-00312 and direct staff to prepare findings of fact that we will approve at next week's meeting.
Second. Motion made in second for denial of the special use permit for the Verizon wireless communication tower. It's made by Vice Mayor Farmer, second by Commissioner Shum. That was also to include the findings of fact to be presented to the commission next week for its approval. Again, Vice Mayor Farmer made the motion, and second by Commissioner Shum. Any other question or comment? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5-0. Thank you all very much. We'll take a five-minute break while we change members of the room. Now, no, no, no. Thank you.
I'll call the meeting back to order. Chuck, Chuck, Chuck.
Yes.
Would you shut that door, please? Okay, next item on the agenda is to consider authorizing staff to begin negotiations on scope and fee with the design team of Eldorado Incorporated for the Ninth Street Corridor Project. Over the last several weeks, we have had a public hearing here at City Hall to discuss this item. It was, uh, last Monday. Excuse me. Uh, last, uh, last Monday evening, there was a neighborhood meeting and stakeholders meeting, a number of people involved at, um, New York School, which we were able to get all kinds of information from, and we appreciate everybody's involvement in that. So we have had one public hearing, and we've had, you know, a lot of comments that were raised, uh, last Monday. So, uh, when we get to the, uh, public comments section this evening, I would, uh, open it up for public comment, uh, some. If you have new comments to bring forward, please, please bring new forward, or new comments forward. But, um, like I say, you know, we have had public hearing, and tonight it is a matter of authorizing staff to begin negotiations, uh, with Eldorado. And that, um, once, once the scope and the fee is back, then we're really gonna have something to talk about. So, anyway, let's, uh, you know, it's time to make that decision, but, um, let's, um, go ahead and, uh, start this evening, and, Janie?
Sure.
Do you like to present where we are right now?
Yeah, I'm Christina McClellan, I'm the Director of Arts and Culture for the city. Um, Mary, you pretty much summed it up. We did set, uh, meeting, uh, we set the agenda jointly with Elna, the Lawrence Art Center, and Downtown Lawrence, Inc. for the meeting that was held last Monday. We had, uh, over a hundred people attend that meeting, and, um, the comments that were generated from that meeting are attached, um, in the packet. Um, they were related to the scope of work for the recommended design team, particularly what constitutes a full partner in the project, and how project updates should be communicated. In addition, uh, the recommended design team Eldorado was in attendance, and we included in what was distributed the, um, project approach that they had submitted as part of what they submitted when they applied for the RFQ. And, um, Josh Sheldon from Eldorado was in attendance to clarify any questions that, um, anyone might have during the meeting. So I don't have a lot to add, um, but we are again bringing that recommendation to, um, begin negotiating with them. Um, and then that draft contract would come back to City Commission for approval.
And, and here, give the timeframe of when that will come back?
Well, um, you know, given the, uh, if, if the approval is granted tonight, I expect it would take us several weeks to, um, negotiate that. Um, and with the holidays coming up, that could potentially set that back. So I, my, um, my thought would be maybe early January.
Okay. Okay. Questions? Dave, do you have anything to add on this?
No, I, I think we'll, um, if we get direction this evening, we'll begin that work in an office, and we'll make sure that we can get any draft scope or contract out for, let it get a chance to look at, so that they can, yeah, provide an opportunity for common on.
Okay. And during this time of, uh, you know, putting together the fee and the scope of, the scope of service, um, what, um, you know, there was a lot of, uh, talk during the East Lawrence meeting last Monday about communication.
Mm-hmm.
And being able to make sure that communication is, you know, provided to the neighborhood, and people have time to get involved. We settled those issues.
Well, you're right, we did receive a lot of feedback related to that. Uh, I know some of it is, um, maybe more related to how we can use our city channels to assist in communication, as well as some of our, um, project partners, like Downtown Lawrence, Inc., and the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association, so we would certainly be working with them. Diane, I don't know if you have anything to add about how we might incorporate that into the contract negotiation?
Only that, um, I think Eldorado also might have some other ideas about communication, some of that was shared at the meeting, and so I imagine that those would further be discussed.
Okay. Well, I know, is there direction that we need, do we need to give during, uh, you know, at this point about our expectations and what that communication ought to look like as part of the scope?
I think if there's any thoughts that you all have that you would like to share with staff, but I, I do know that we've certainly received the message that, that communication and discussions and meetings, um, with the stakeholders is very important, and, and would certainly look to be including that in the, in the scope, draft scope that we would bring back to you all.
Okay.
And I mean, when this returns to the City Commission, should it receive the approval tonight, there's certainly the opportunity, you know, for further comment from the public, you know, related to how we can do that better.
Okay, and then we will take that final action.
Right, right, right.
Okay. Again, any other questions of, um, staff? Okay, thanks, Christina. Okay, new public comments. Any comments? KT?
Um, we had an official East Lawrence, do you want to? Yeah, it seems appropriate, so, since that's official.
Hello, everybody. I'm Jackie Becker, I'm the Vice President of the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association. And in response to the well-attended community meeting on December 1st at New York School, the Elna Board convened on Monday, December 8th, to draft a document that clearly states our desired engagement with the East Ninth Street Corridor Project. East Lawrence is a large diverse group of residents and businesses, working tirelessly to find consensus in what it means to be a full partner in the Ninth Street Corridor Project. We acknowledge the approval for the city to go into negotiations with Eldorado. Elna fully intends to be a full partner in this project. We are currently continuing negotiating our full partnership agreement, which begins with our statement of values. East Lawrence Neighborhood Association will complete the agreement by Monday, December 15th. We ask that the commission consider this document in its negotiations concerning the scope and contract with the design firm, and have it placed on the regular agenda for the December 16th City Commission meeting to discuss this document. Thank you for your careful consideration of this project, and for allowing the East Lawrence Neighborhood Association the time to come to a consensus that supports our values, as the Ninth Street Corridor is the first of its kind project involving public art, a city street, and a lovingly concerned neighborhood.
Just so I understand, do we have that document now?
No, we are very close. We worked tirelessly, many hours last night, and about halfway there, and we're gonna finish it up on Sunday and have everything to you by Monday. So it's, it's coming together, and, and, uh, this is our way of saying, let's move forward.
Okay, so you're, um, okay, just wanna make sure I understand. Okay, KT?
Jackie Becker, our Vice President. My name's KT Walsh, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm speaking only for myself tonight. Thank you very much for giving us that week delay, so we could, um, you know, discuss this at length, that was very helpful. I'm just gonna read this to try and make it within the timeframe. "I've been struck by the parallels of the East Ninth Street Project and the three failed roadway projects attempted in East Lawrence: the Haskell Loop, the East Lawrence Porkway, and the K-10 Connection. When big money comes into the neighborhood in the guise of helping, some of us proceed with caution. I also take my dog almost daily to the south side of the river, and am bemused when I read the bronze plaque on the Marriott Hotel walkway honoring former city manager Buford Watson for building the Riverfront Mall and revitalizing the riverfront. You can see why the mention of revitalizing causes stomachs to churn." On the actual area of the East Ninth Street Project, in the RFQ for the Design and Engineering Team on page seven, it describes it as six blocks from the industrial district to downtown, which is Delaware Street to New Hampshire Street. But on the attached map to the same RFQ, it goes seven blocks from Delaware to Mass. Yet, in the full Art Place Grant, it says the project area is six blocks on page two and page seven. I think some of the confusion about the actual area is that, uh, there's two things, knowing where the actual western boundary of the East Lawrence Neighborhood is, which is in the alley behind the Marriott, and then it zigs over on the north to Rhode Island Street. And number two, I think there's confusion about the cultural district boundaries, which include all of downtown and all of East Lawrence. I've heard many people conflate the cultural district area with the East Ninth Street Project area, so they assume the East Ninth Street Project includes downtown. "If the six-block area Delaware to New Hampshire is now being changed, it needs to be discussed by all involved publicly and openly. We must all agree that it is either six blocks or seven blocks, knowing the ramifications." In the RFQ, it also asks the firm who their proposed subconsultants will be, and I'd like to know if the named consultants, placeholders, and the grant are a done deal. "If Eldorado is hired, would they be willing to look for some ethnic and gender diversity in their consultants beyond just Canadians?" And finally, I want to talk about the Art Place Grant budget. When I saw all the blacked-out names and dollar amounts, I assumed it was because they were just regular or yearly donors to the art center who wanted to protect their privacy. But after I noodled around on the internet for a while, I realized that all the blacked-out names and amounts are specifically for the East Ninth Street Project, including additional dollars behind the Art Place, beyond the Art Place Grant and the $3 million plus that the city has committed. These are dollars from individuals, corporations, and foundations, including some in-kind donations, grant administrative fees, et cetera."
KT, you've got three minutes, okay?
Okay, can I do 10 seconds?
Okay.
Um, we all need to see these figures and the names, so we know how much the actual budget is, we don't need to know the art center salaries, we need to know who supports the project. It's the last step in transparency for all involved, and a big step towards building trust. The numbers and names are from April in the grant, so they need to be brought up to date, and then continually updated as people, people contribute to the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other comment?
I'm gonna come in at 3:10. My name's Phil Collison, I'm speaking tonight as an owner of a property along Ninth Street. I look forward to participating in the design of this project, and will be active to ensure that there is a clear structure and a clear process for making decisions, that there will be a defined and known budget, and that all the stakeholders and participants are defined in advance, and that everything is being done in an open room, and no deals are being made in the back room. This project is really all about rebuilding infrastructure. We'll get a new street that has local art on it. On the surface, that sounds like a wonderful goal, but is that the only goal? That is certainly the only goal of mine. In a live and work and play world, live, work, and play world, that fulfills the live goal. The neighborhood is already achieving that goal in the, in the live category. We want some infrastructure improvements, we don't want our taxes to go up, and we want our quality of life. The live aspect is good right now, we are a vital neighborhood. There are other stakeholders in this project, what are their ultimate goals? Is it the play goal in the live, work, and play world? How does that play goal impact the already good live world? The worst case is that taxes go up and quality of life goes down, because our new street becomes an attractive nuisance. I want the project to find that right balance between the live and play goals. The design process needs to incorporate checks and balances, so that what comes into the neighborhood after the completion of this attractive nuisance continues to foster that quality of life. It needs to include a conservation overlay district that has a vision for increasing the quality of life for the residents of East Lawrence. The design process needs to include checks and balances for the future that prevent outside influences from swooping in and changing the overall character of the neighborhood. The design process must include the cultural attributes that have shaped my neighborhood since the city's founding. This street and its environs are a part of the original plat of the city, and embrace that this is where the Civil War began, this is the place that exodusters were allowed to own property, where La Yarda brought in some of our earliest residents, and where blue collar workers lived, alongside shop owners and other merchants and businesspeople, and our neighbors who fought so hard to prevent our neighborhood from being destroyed in the 1970s by the Haskell Loop. These are the people who built this neighborhood and built this town. This project should demonstrate the connection between the old and the new. I believe that this project has been initiated with what is perceived to be the best interests of the neighborhood in mind. There are fears within the neighborhood that those best interests are not truly in the best interests of our residents. This project must recognize that, it must recognize that, and should address those fears from the very outset. The project cannot be considered successful if some residents are left out of the planning process, because their concerns were not addressed, or they were discounted. I see a project that truly embraces the diversity in lifestyles that encompass East Lawrence. Embracing that becomes a part of the project intentionally, and is part of the planning. It is in everyone's best interest to build the process and structure, so that in 20 years, we can all look back on this project and say, yes, that was a well-run and well-built project that truly incorporated the best interests of the residents and fulfilled its goals. Let's make this project, project, a success that we can all live with. I appreciate you for listening.
Thanks, Phil. Other comment? Okay. Well, I gotta tell you something. You know, I, um, a lot of you know that, um, part of my young life, I grew up on the corner of Ninth and Rhode Island Street, okay? And that my grandparents lived in 900 block of Rhode Island for a long time. And, um, there's been some things that I think are very positive for this community, especially in the downtown, that have happened. But I'm here to tell you as Commissioner, and I know the gentlemen that I serve with will make sure that, uh, the things that happen on Ninth Street, you are all extremely involved and aware of every step of the process. I truly believe that, uh, Josh is the right person and his company to run this. I believe that, uh, you know, our goal here is to have the best street in the world. We're about infrastructure. I truly believe in the conservation overlay district, as I said to many of you during the time of, uh, meeting last Monday night. I truly believe in that. I do not want to touch your property, I want to build a street that's safe for all. I do want to make improvements in East Lawrence, I believe that that is the best community that we have, and it's one that this entire city was founded on. And that is our goal, and that's what this is about. And tonight, we're going to prove, I hope, a direction to staff to work out a scope of services and a fee with Eldorado and Josh, to come up with that plan, so we truly have something to talk about. And that we're going to be able to come forward and make a plan that we all are going to be happy with, as Phil just mentioned. That should be our only goal in all this, is something that we're truly proud of as a community, when it's all said and done. That's what this is about, and that's all it's about. So I look forward to working with each and every one of you through this entire process. We're gonna hold one another's hands from time to time, but we're gonna get through this, and we're gonna come up with a project that we're all proud of, and one that works for everybody, and, and, you know, especially in East Lawrence. Okay? Any other comments?
Two quick comments, one is that I just want to congratulation, congratulate East Lawrence. I went to the meeting, and I think that was an extremely well-run, I thought the comments were very appropriate, I thought the attitude of the citizens was very beneficial for me to listen to, and I think it was a great situation that we had. So I think that was a wonderful meeting, probably one of the better ones that I've been to, uh, at, at any time. Second thing, if you read the project approach from Eldorado, I think you'll see a lot of the concepts that you want in that. Uh, when you look at both the citizen participation model, the artist's participation model, but particularly the first one, I think you'll see that. So I tried to keep that under 60 seconds.
Thanks. Other comments? Okay. Well, um, I am going to entertain a motion to, uh, you know, for the, um, directing staff, authorizing staff to begin the negotiations on the scope and the, um, fee with Eldorado on the Ninth Street Corridor Project. But before we do that, I just want to make sure that, you know, it's all understood that, you know, uh, as we get to the final details of, when it comes back to the commission, you know, I'm especially interested in making sure that communications, um, and how that is to be handled between, uh, all of the stakeholders, uh, is, is taken into consideration, and we have a clear map of what that looks like, and if you need my assistance or other Commissioners' assistance, then, uh, we're happy to be involved with that, okay? Anything else? I would entertain a motion then to authorize the staff to begin negotiations on a scope and fee with the design team of Eldorado Incorporated for the Ninth Street Corridor Project. Thank you all very much for coming this evening, too. Thank you all for your hard work. Entertain that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second for approval, made by Commissioner Shawn, second by Commissioner Reardon, all in favor of that motion? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And Jackie, uh, you will get me that, um, information later on in the week? Okay? Uh, make sure you deliver it to staff if you can't find me, okay? Okay. Thank you all again.
Pretty hard to find, Mike.
I'm sorry?
Said you're pretty hard to find.
Just in case you can't find me, okay? Next item on the agenda, we'll wait just a minute, uh, people who want to leave. Okay. Next item on the agenda then is to receive a request from Hillcrest Foods Incorporated for 18 dedicated parking stalls along the east side of Massachusetts Street at 11th for an Uptown Market grocery store. Mr. Fleming?
Commissioners, I'm Bill Fleming, I'm General Counsel with Trainer Architects, and we're pleased to report that we're working- with Hillcrest Foods, the Lewis family, to try to bring a grocery store to downtown Lawrence. So I think that's very exciting, and we're very pleased to begin that process. And as so many things happen, I think Chris has got some information he's gonna pass out that shows just a site plan. And as these things happen, the way these things always happen is that parking is always kind of the preliminary threshold issue that comes up. And I guess before I start talking about this particular project, I'd like to introduce some people that are with me. Chris Cunningham is our project architect. We've got Robert Green with First Management, Mike Trainer, Trainer Architects, and then we have JR Lewis and Jim Lewis, and both Mr. Lewis and JR are gonna say something here in just a few minutes. So if you have questions for them, you can address those to them. But anyway, before I start on this particular request and this particular project, I think I just want to talk real quickly about a success story, which was Trainer Architects. And several years ago, we decided to, we had two different offices located in kind of the west side of Lawrence, and we decided to relocate our offices down to 1040 Vermont. We came down to the city. Most of you were on the City Commission at that time, and we were able to establish Neighborhood Revitalization Act district, and we were able to also work out arrangement on parking. That partnership between Trainer Architects and the city, I think, has been very, very successful. I think at the time we moved down, we had something like 45 architects or professionals that worked at Trainer Architects. I think since that time, we've grown to about 60 people in the downtown area. And I know for myself, and I think everybody else would say, that we really enjoy the move down to the downtown area, and it's been, from our perspective, just a wonderful success. And so, again, you know, I think it's an example of a success story and working with the city on dealing with the parking issues that we had to deal with on that project. So this particular project, I'm gonna give you a quick overview here. This is just an aerial view. This is the project location. It is the Allen Press site. As you know, or as probably Mayor Amick knows, this used to be a grocery store back some time ago in this location. But anyway, we're planning on putting in around a 20,000-square-foot grocery store in this location. We provide some parking. To orient everybody, this is Massachusetts Street, so you're looking north Massachusetts. Here's 11th Street here. Here's the Douglas County Courthouse. Here's the Judicial Center. Most of these buildings here right now are vacant or underutilized, so this would be kind of a revitalization of this area and the southern end of the downtown area. So we're obviously excited to proceed with that process. If we go back to the site plan, which I've handed out to everyone, the plan basically involves apartments, some offices on the second story, and then on the ground level, we would put in a Checkers grocery store. That'd be around 22,000 square feet or so in range. Again, to orient yourself, now we're looking kind of west. This direction to the top of this is to the west, so Massachusetts Street is running along this side here, and then you've got 11th Street over here. These spaces here are existing spaces, although there's a curb cut right there fairly close to the Einstein's Bagel, so we would be adding some parking spaces there. And then we would create some new parking spaces along, at least under our proposal, would be to create some new parking spaces along 11th Street here and in this location. And then we would build a parking structure in this location, which is basically bound by 11th and New Hampshire Streets, to provide additional parking for the grocery store use. So it'd be a combination of city parking plus private parking that we would construct. As you know, Mr. Lewis, JR Lewis, prepared a letter. I guess since it's Christmas season, I would characterize this as our wish list. It's what we want from Santa as far as for parking needs for downtown. The whole point of this process, though, is just to start the dialogue. We're not trying to make demands. We're not trying to dictate solutions. We're just here to start, try to, you know, open up the dialogue and begin discussions with the city on how we can deal with these parking issues. And some of the issues, I think, that we have to discuss and kind of reach some understanding before we can proceed with the project is, you know, how are we gonna pay for the cost of these parking spaces? How are we going to monitor the use of the parking spaces? And, you know, how are parking spaces gonna be maintained? And so I think, you know, each of these areas probably has maybe a different answer to each one of those questions, but I think that's part of the dialogue that we want to begin with the city and ask the city to, or request the city to appoint a group to study those issues and to then bring back recommendations to you, the City Commission, for approval so that we can hopefully then begin to start this, what I believe is a very exciting project. So at this point, I'm gonna be quiet. I am gonna ask Mr. Lewis and JR Lewis to speak for a few minutes. I guess I'll take in questions right now if you have any for me, but otherwise, I'll introduce JR Lewis.
Okay. We have any questions of Bill right now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, thank you.
JR Lewis with Checkers at 23rd and Louisiana. And to make it short and sweet, the reason why we're here is our community has come to us and asked for a grocery store downtown. And we believe in our community, and I've met with many people here already, and we believe in it, and we've tried to look at many different options within downtown and met a lot of resistance with other locations. And with this location, we met a team of people that seem to have a common goal with helping the community achieve something that everybody's asking for. We believe in the project, and we believe in the team, and as I've shared with some of you already here, the solutions, it's a puzzle, and it's gonna take a community effort to solve that. One of the main ones is the parking. Our main supplier is Associated Wholesale Grocers, AWG, and one of the prerequisites for building a store is a ratio of parking five to one. So I think our current store is five or six to one at 23rd and Louisiana. Grandpa says it's six. So we're trying to get it close. Many questions have arisen about the 18 parking spots. I've heard 34, 16 are new, so we'd be developing those with the group. The 18 out front is pertinent, and that's what we're bringing to the table tonight.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, please?
Please.
When you say your ratio is five to one, what does that mean?
Parking spots per thousand.
Okay. One parking spot.
Square foot. Square foot of the grocery store.
Five parking spaces per thousand square feet. Okay, any other question?
Looking at 110.
I'm sorry?
We were looking at 110, based on the square footage.
Okay, the other question I have is, how does this store compare size-wise to your store on 23rd?
About half the size.
About half the size. And then how many parking spaces in the garage are you anticipating being for the grocery store?
Ground level, I believe it was 59 on this plan.
So 59 plus the two different locations of surface lots. Thank you.
I just want to ask you a couple of questions on the record, just because there's a lot of hubbub on social media and a lot of people are really misinformed. So one of the things is that you guys intentionally broke off negotiations with Borders. Can you comment on how those fell apart and why? And just to get it out there, because there's a lot of miscommunications about what's going on with that deal.
The proposals that went back and forth were not feasible. When we gave them a proposal, it would take quite a while to get one back, and when we got it back, it wasn't feasible for an operation to succeed.
Another one of the comments was, how can it be cheaper at a new building as opposed -- because a lot of this is dealing with the Borders location. There's a group of folks that had had some meetings with you, really prefer that location as opposed to this one. I just feel like it's good to kind of clear the air and get some facts out there, straight from you guys. One of the other questions that was asked was, how could it be cheaper in a new building as opposed to an old one? Can you comment on that?
Wouldn't be cheap. That's a fact. New construction costs more than existing, but then it depends on what the overall repairs and maintenance and refrigeration would be in the long term.
Okay. And then, let's see. That's all I have now. I may have a couple more in just a few minutes.
I'll ask later, sorry.
Can you address your part of the answer?
Come up to the microphone, please.
It's up to you, Bill. Part of the answer is that if you designed this facility from the ground up, then you're able to design the elements that they really need and want. We're able to get higher floor-to-ceiling heights in this building, which is important for how they manage their inventory and that sort of things. When you're going into an existing building, you don't have that luxury, you know, to be able to say how tall the building's gonna be. It's already built. And so there's a lot of those kinds of things that if you design it from the ground up, yes, it's more expensive to build, it's gonna be cheaper to operate, and it's gonna meet your needs much better, I think, in the long run because it's been designed specifically with the grocery store in mind as opposed to trying to do an adaptive reuse of another building.
Well, and I had made that comment to somebody who'd sent me an email, just that, you know, being kind of in the food business myself, I know retrofitting a building that wasn't really designed for those kinds of purposes.
You would never buy a warehouse with a 12-foot ceiling. You would buy one with an 18- or 22-foot ceiling.
Absolutely. Yeah, I just, I think it's good to just kind of get some of this stuff out because this is the first time we've really had a public conversation about this, and there's a lot of folks that are really upset and frustrated that things aren't moving forward with what they perceive is a better location, and I think it's good for that group to hear you address some of those things.
It's a little different when you're talking to people in our community, people that live in Lawrence versus somebody who lives in Detroit, somebody who's in Philadelphia. It's a little bit easier when everybody can sit in one room and create solutions, and that's kind of what we've been doing.
Okay, thanks.
I just had one question. A number of people have talked about having this elsewhere. Can you think of any place else in East Lawrence to eliminate this food desert that we have other than this possibility, since Borders isn't a possibility at this time? I can't think of any, but...
No, I've had some people bring up other locations along that Ninth Street corridor, and somebody even brought up back by the polar loft, so you're getting too far back into the community according to our surveys.
Sometimes you have situations where, like the ITC, the police, where that building could not be retrofitted, and it's, you know, you just don't know if you think that's a possibility. If you think that's something that can be done, you just don't know what, you know, what's important in the city. And what's important in this city is, at this point, is that we provide you some place and some help with this, and it all depends on what we can do and what we can't do. But I'm very much in support of having a grocery store downtown, and I think all the commissioners are.
Yeah, JR, a question that I had, and I gotta tell you, since being on the commission for a couple of years, I mean, this is the first time I've considered a grocery store in downtown, so that is a big deal, and I want to thank you for that. A lot of discussion going on, too, about, you know, this location, and six blocks away you have, you know, another big competitor. Tell me about the importance of this location and specifically 11th Street.
It's closer to the Hill and the students. That's a factor of bodies. It comes down to people, the number of people that are required. We work on a low margin, and it requires traffic, people walking in the doors.
You bring up an important part there. How many of your, I know that you've done some modeling of your business and some business planning. How many of the people that you're gonna serve are probably gonna come in by foot as they come to downtown?
A high percentage. We haven't done exact numbers on who's walking and who's driving in, but it would be a large percentage.
Okay. And in this concept, you know, everything goes into play. We're gonna have local goods.
As much local as we can get and as green as we can get.
Okay.
What we try to do is provide the freshest products at the lowest possible price, and that's what we've been doing in the community for years. That wouldn't change.
Well, I know, I appreciate you bringing up the term "community." I know myself, along with Commissioner Shawn and Commissioner Dever, you know, we have our businesses in the community, and I know for myself, I've heard from some of the community members and some of potentially, you know, future neighbors about concerns about parking, just to bring that out because it kind of all works together, you know? We're kind of one close-knit little group, you know, in downtown of the, you know, the store owners and service providers and, you know, all the professional offices that we have, and, you know, just everybody that's down there. And we need to recognize, you know, if all this were to go together, how that is gonna work, and because it's gotta work together, so...
We understand it's a puzzle.
Oh, yeah.
It's gonna take a community effort. We understand that.
Well, we appreciate that. Any other questions? Do you have anybody else that was...
My name is Jim Lewis. I'm the older version of JR. I've been back in the community for 32 years. I'm deeply rooted here. We're committed to helping the community grow and develop, and the community solicited us to provide service downtown that has not been provided for many years, and we're willing to go into that venture, but that venture all crux on one thing, and you all have discussed that, and it's parking. And so we need your deep consideration on helping us with the parking. If you can do that, the project is very viable, and without the parking, it is not viable. Beyond that, I won't waste your time, but I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody here.
Thanks. You, too. Okay. Mr. Fleming, did you have anyone else that wanted to speak to you?
No, that's all.
Okay. Well, we're gonna open this up to some public comment, and I want to assure everybody there is not a decision to be made on this this evening. In no way, there is decision. I mean, this is so early in the process, you know, the best's gonna happen is we refer this to staff to, you know, just start looking at this. So with that, I would like to open it up to public comment. I think we're first person coming up. If we could have your name, and if you could, again, limit your comments to about three minutes, I'm...
I will do that.
Pretty close. Thanks.
Name is Town Peterson, 923 Rhode Island, right next to what I believe was your grandma's house.
Grandma's house, there you go.
It's been about two and a half years since you all have had the misfortune to have me in front of you.
Welcome back.
And two and a half years ago, what I was asking you all to do, and I think a lot of people in the East Lawrence area were asking you to do, was to put together a serious strategic plan for the whole New Hampshire Street corridor, which is to say from 11th Street to the river. What we were seeing two and a half years ago was development that was being driven by commercial interests. We all knew that. That's what we have going on at Ninth Street in New Hampshire right now. So it seemed to me to be very, very logical to get a study and a plan that could develop that strip, which is mostly undeveloped or was mostly undeveloped, before we start developing. Two and a half years have gone by, and there's still no plan and no plan for a plan. Two and a half years have gone by, and there's still no plan, and no plan for a plan. This building, I would assert quite strongly, and we'll do this over and over again. As you said, this is just the start of it. It's too tall, and it's in the wrong place. Too tall because it breaks up downtown by putting a big barrier. Trainer Architects was very careful to avoid saying the word "seven," that seven stories is too high. I think what we need to do is to find a location that is farther north, in the middle of the food desert. A big consideration is a lot of people who want to walk across from North Lawrence. This is four blocks farther south. I talked to some people from North Lawrence a few weeks ago, and they were saying that the Borders location is about as far south as people will walk. So, that's a very important consideration. Find the structure that's ideally existing and that has parking associated with it. Sounds like the Borders site to me. So, I think you need to really think very carefully about whether this is the strategic thing to do or it's what one group of people who can make some money off it want to do. That'd be my suggestion to you. I'm very, very appreciative of checkers in the community. In fact, we do all of our shopping there, and we'll continue to. But I think it's also worth pointing out that this is not a sole proprietor endeavor, which is to say, this is one possibility, and the city already has a mechanism developed for a request for proposals and ideas. And so, if this doesn't work out, this is not our only option.
Tom, thank you. Other comment? Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Kerry Strong. I live at 1025 and a Half Mass, and I own Amy's Coffee House at 1025 Mass, just below my residence. I am very appreciative of checkers. We do our shopping there, not just for our home, but twice a week for the business as well. My concern, though, is the parking, and I don't want to get too deep into that, because I know that's going to be a discussion in the future. But I would just like the mayor and the commission to make sure that they're involving all the businesses along Mass in any discussions in the future for this. I know Commissioner Shum did a great deal of work on the trainer parking talks that we had, and I really was appreciative to that. And I would just like to make sure that we're always involved with that conversation.
That's it. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Dave Crawford, 715 Illinois. And I have been lead organizer for the project Downtown Grocery. We started this a couple, two years ago, maybe a little longer. And it was in a response to LJ World article, and we all know about, a food desert in the northeast quarter of Lawrence. We've worked pretty tirelessly, meeting once a week. We haven't missed a meeting yet. And the idea was to find a grocer and a location that would defeat this food desert. And of course, the first grocer that we thought of was a local, family-owned grocer, the Lewis's. And we were pleased to death that Jim and JR would pick up the ball. And, you know, we followed them, we've given them our support. Gosh, we have, you know, thousands of people on a petition, 300 people on a Facebook page. Every neighborhood association adjacent to this food desert is in support of a grocery store downtown. And, you know, we really thought that this was going to work out at the Borders building. What's happened, I believe, with the owners, the group that owns the Borders building, is like JR said, they are detached. They live at, their offices are at a distance, they're not as welcoming as a local developer. But nevertheless, I've received personal phone calls from the principal at Greer Realty at 7:00 in the morning, asking me how things were going along. So, you know, I don't really think the problem is that they were difficult. I think that the problem is, is that they weren't given enough time. We've been in contact with the owners of the Borders building, Laneport Realty in Kansas City. And, you know, we're not convinced that there isn't something that can be worked out with them. So, you know, what I want to leave you all with is an idea. A friend of mine asked me the other day when we were talking, he said, "You know, go over to 7th Massachusetts and look south from 7th to Massachusetts." You know, he said, "What would you see?" And a couple of people, I've asked that, they said, "You know, a lot of businesses." And I said, "Well, you know what? There's a tower, you know, at the top of that horizon." And he said, "Well, what do you think about that?" And I said, "Well, you know, that tower that's on that horizon is really the icon for Lawrence." And, you know, we're going to have to be... We want a grocery store downtown, absolutely. We want that food desert defeated, absolutely. But we need to, you know, as JR said, this is going to take a community, and it's going to take some real looking after, and we're going to hope that the city commission will do that for us.
Thanks, Dave. Other comment?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I'm representing the North Lawrence Improvement Association and Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods, and also the Downtown Grocery Store Group. Been on it with David for over a year, and we've worked diligently trying to get a grocery store down at Borders. Now, you know, we do need a grocery store at Borders, but, I mean, downtown. But I think 11th Street and Lawrence Association of Neighborhoods think that that's the wrong place for many reasons. One is parking, the other is traffic, the other is a seven-story building that's going to block out everything on the east end of town, including the courthouse. And also, North Lawrence, you know, we haven't had a grocery store since about 1995. So, we were pretty enthusiastic about when this project started, and also when the Lewis's, we asked them to get in there with Borders, and hopefully that would happen, but it hadn't happened yet. But our concern is, and we've talked about this, is, you know, maybe there's another grocery store that might be interested in the Borders building and maybe could negotiate a deal. Because I was at the meeting when we called Kansas City and spoke to them on a conference call, and they were still interested in leasing the Borders building. And so, maybe we ought to put out that RFI. Maybe we ought to bite some competition in here. You know, competition makes the world go around. And I think the 11th Street project is going to be a difficult situation, not only in parking. Who's going to monitor that? Are we going to pay our police department to monitor those parking places? I've talked to people in North Lawrence and around, and they don't want to park in a parking garage to go grocery shopping. I mean, if that was the case, we'd do the mall down at Marriott, have a covered parking place, go in there and park shop, come out. Yeah, we talked about that in North Lawrence, they wasn't for that either. And so, I think we ought to keep negotiations up with Greer Realty on the Borders building. And the parking's there, the zoning's there, 20,000 feet there. It's ready to go, it's in the middle of the food desert. And also, the grocery store was, in that area, was designed to service an area one mile circumference. North Lawrence, Pinkney, Old West Lawrence, East Lawrence, Brooktree, Orient, all of that. It wasn't just for the downtown or the KU or anything like that. It was for the neighborhoods. So, we'd like to keep that on track. So, thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Hello, my name's Brad Ziegler. It's my 25th year owning Louise's Bar downtown from the 1000 block of Massachusetts Street. So, I'm pretty familiar with that block. A few misconceptions that I want to point out in this letter of request was that that block is not as used as other downtown blocks. Well, on my way down here tonight, there was not a parking spot on either side of Massachusetts Street, or in the public lot behind the 1000 block. On Friday, when I read the article in the paper that we are going to be discussing this tonight, I drove downtown at 1:30 that afternoon, there were three spots on that entire block that were empty. They're asking for 60% of the parking on the east side of the street in that block. I don't see how that works, and I want to quote one of the Lewis's. If we're going to talk about being a community and a neighbor and being, you know, getting involvement from the people who are in that neighborhood and business owners, if we don't have enough property, I'm quoting Mr. Lewis, "If we don't have enough parking, you can't have enough business, and then it fails." That goes for more than just grocery stores. It goes for Mars, it goes for bagel shops. There are 25 businesses on that block. Only two of them are not locally owned. So, if we're going to talk about being local and a community, I think we should have started talking with the people of that block. I went door-to-door today. No one was even informed of that meeting. We didn't get a courtesy letter that this was happening tonight. It seems to be happening awful fast. I know if I want to apply for a downtown parking permit or a sidewalk permit, I have to write my neighbors' letter and get their input before anything happens. I think this process needs to be slowed down, a lot of questions. I know I have three minutes, but as far as who's going to monitor the parking, are going to be shopping carts up and down Mass Street? That'll be a fun thing to have on a Friday night, being a bunch of college kids at 2:00 in the morning with shopping carts. I mean, is there the 24-hour parking? Where are all the, you know? There's a lot of vagueness in this, and I would like, the main thing, if I could be on this committee, I'd love to be helped with any information I could have to provide you on 1000 block of Massachusetts Street. But I know that the businesses are there, need that parking, we rely on it. That's all I have. You have any questions?
Brad, I appreciate that. We talked the other day, Brad... I think I talked to you the other day. You didn't call me the other day?
No.
I don't know, somebody called me from your block, one of a couple. But one of the things is, it is extremely early in this process, I want you to know that. And as, you know, we look at this request, believe me, we are going to include everybody that is in that area and the areas around there, so that we can get plenty of input as to, you know, what it's going to look like. We don't have any idea at this point, okay? Just want you to know that.
Well, they made a comment earlier about building from the ground up, why not build 18 more parking spots in the parking garage?
Maybe a possibility, we'll see.
One less apartment in the parking building. There's a lot of options.
Okay, thanks. Other comment?
Yes, Daniel Wildcat, I live at 812 Louisiana Street. I'm kind of a latecomer to the Downtown Grocery Store Group that Dave put together. And I'm one of those people who got involved because very excited about the Borders location. I understand for a number of reasons that hasn't worked out. But I want to just make two quick points and then kind of an observation. The first quick point is the sort of second what's already been indicated. I think as we start thinking about what we're going to do in downtown Lawrence, I think we need to, you know, those of us that are here take so much of this for granted. But working with a lot of people in Kansas City and, you know, up and down the I-70 corridor with K-State, people from Manhattan, Kansas, it's interesting why people come to Lawrence. They want to come to Lawrence because its historic character of this downtown, that Massachusetts street, that attracts people. They marvel at what they see when they go down there. So, I want to put in at least one thing. I know we're early in the process, and I think we've got good minds that can come together to kind of tackle some tough issues. But I think this historical character of that particular area, and we'd have the Watkins Bank there to the west, we've got the historic courthouse, Douglas County Courthouse, that building there. And then to the east, I guess what's called the English Lutheran Church there that has been maintained. It's now a law office. Yeah, I feel a little bit, I don't want to use technical language here, but like my grandmother used to say, I don't want to be sold a pig and a poke. We want a downtown grocery store, but what this is attached to seems to be something that we weren't really engaged in talking about. So, I think, just keep that in mind. I think maybe there is, you know, whatever's going to happen in that area, we need to look at it. But let's take that historical, you know, perspective and really value that, because I don't want to ever get to where we take that for granted and destroy what's unique in the process of moving forward. And the second point is really quite simple, and that is that I do think that there's, we're early in the discussion. I do think we've got people who can come together as a community to find a solution to end really this disgraceful situation with the food desert here in Lawrence, Kansas. And, you know, I want to be a part of that. I think, you know, the Downtown Grocery Store Group wants to be. I know business owners want to be a part of it. And so, I just want to say, you know, let's start the discussion, let's get everyone involved, because I think this is a very important community issue. And the final observation is, you know, sitting here tonight, and, you know, I was kind of looking at my clock and thinking, you know, I should be grading exams. But this is what I love about Lawrence. This is what I love about Lawrence, that people get up, they speak their mind, that you listen, and that I think we can make something good happen. I think we're very early in it. I agree with JR and Jim. And I'm really glad that they stepped forward, you know, to help us make this happen. So, anyway, thank you.
Dan, thank you. Other comment?
Good evening, Michael Wallman again, and I won't go five minutes. I want to speak about, I want to address parking, because that's what the agenda item is about. But before I do, I'd like to make a couple of observations that good design weighs and balances the various options. And although I was involved early on with the grocery group, and I prefer the Borders location, actually, I call that the Livery Stable location. I want to point out, first of all, that regarding adaptive reuse as opposed to new construction and the various costs, the Livery Stable building is an adaptive reuse situation. That building, which was Borders, was done that way. Similarly, Trainer Architects headquarters is an adaptive reuse. They virtually removed, what, 80% of that building and rebuilt? It can be done. I don't know how the negotiations are going with the owner of the Livery Stable building or not. But regarding parking, in favor of this location, I can see a number of things that could happen. For one thing, the police department tax, income tax proposal partially addressed the lack of parking at the Judicial and Law Enforcement Center. This could help solve part of that problem. Another thing about parking is that parking is always in the context of automobile parking. This is a downtown grocery store, which is what we're talking about. A lot of the traffic's going to be walking traffic, in theory, that's the idea. A lot of the traffic's going to be bicycle traffic. That kind of bicycle traffic, though, needs to be utility bicycles. We need to accommodate that in the size of the spaces and the accessibility from the convenience to the front doors for people toting packages. So, parking can be addressed, maybe fewer automobile spaces, more utility bicycle spaces. So, parking can be addressed, maybe fewer automobile spaces, more utility bicycle spaces. Another thing about parking is that the Peak Oil Plan that this commission adopted calls for reducing parking requirements, is automobile parking requirements to, as a disincentive to driving, so that more people will walk and bicycle. That's part of the Peak Oil Plan recommendations. You're already considering that, or maybe you've done it already with the Here project? I'm not sure exactly where that is in this process. This certainly is a candidate for some reduced parking requirements. So, I'm not saying I endorse this location, but there are things that can be done, you know, to help alleviate some of the concerns, although I think those same things can be done at the 7th and New Hampshire location as well, and I prefer that location. So, various observations, take it for what it's worth. Thank you.
Michael, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Lewis. Oh, the Mr. and Mrs. Louises.
Okay. Other comment?
Can I just address a few things?
Please.
First of all, Brad, we did send information to Downtown Inc. about this meeting. We did not contact the business owners, but we did send information to Downtown Inc. The process that we used, we went through the Trainer process, is we had a meeting where all the downtown business owners showed up and provided input into that, and so I would anticipate some type of similar process would happen. So, there's not any intent to exclude anybody. It's just, this is the point of starting the process, asking the city to start helping us send those notifications out. So, I just see this as the first step. It's not the final step. There's no decisions being made here. It's just, it's just a part of starting the process of then getting that input from the local business owners. And we understand there's all, there's all sorts of competing interests here, and that all those have to be balanced as part of this process. The second point I want to make is, I mean, I didn't come into this thing six months ago, or we didn't come into this thing six months ago. I mean, we read the newspaper like everybody else, and what the newspaper said was, the Louises had had negotiations with Borders, and they didn't go anywhere. And so, that's when we made the phone call to JR to say, are you interested in this location? I mean, I don't see how you can force the Louises to go to a location where they've already tried to make a deal and negotiate something in a situation that's obviously shown that they can't make a deal there. So, you know, I respect all the work that the local grocery store group has done, but I don't think that having side channels of negotiation or communication with the owners of Borders is necessarily helpful. And I would also point out that if we want to actually promote a local grocery store group doing a grocery store in downtown, that this is probably the best solution that we've got right now. I don't think having an RFI or continuing to solicit proposals from out-of-town grocery stores is going to be particularly helpful. I don't think there's room for two grocery stores in downtown. I think there's probably no room for one. So, you know, maybe this solution isn't the perfect solution as opposed, you know, for what a lot of people think. We're four blocks, you know, farther away from North Lawrence. Sorry about that, but, you know, this happens to be one of the few developable lots that happens to be ready for development in the city, and it's, you know, a situation where the buildings that are there now are underutilized and frankly are not particularly conducive to promoting downtown. And if we can redevelop those, this site, that should be something that's a positive for everybody in downtown. The other thing is, we had some meetings on Horizon 2020 Plan. I just participated in those at Lawrence High School. This has been probably three weeks ago. Dave was there, some of the other planning staff was there, and they had all these different groups, including, and different tables, and one of the things that they said was, we need to promote density for downtown. Well, that's, that's a totally different discussion, and some of the people that have made comments today have said, well, it's too tall and all that. Well, we're going to have those discussions, too. I mean, this, these parking issues are separate. We still have to go through the same process that we did on these other projects to go through and meet downtown design guidelines, to have a discussion with you, have a discussion with the community, seek input from the neighbors. I mean, all of those processes still also have to run, and there's not been any decisions on those things either. So, that, that's a separate line that we have to go down, but we have to start someplace. And it seems to us the logical place to start is kind of addressing the threshold issue, which is, can we get adequate parking to make this project work or not? So, that's, those are my comments. So, be happy to take any questions if you have any questions, but otherwise.
I shouldn't have questions of anybody. Thank you all. Back to the commission then. The way I see it, we can refer the item to staff. Staff and myself and the rest of the commission members can come up with a plan of how we want to discuss this item, what would be the appropriate way to process, you know, this parking request item. I think it's absolutely right, you know, from the Louises and Hillcrest Foods Incorporated. I think, I think this is the one question that has to be answered up front, as far as I can tell. So, I don't, is there a timeframe that everybody needs to meet in this? Nope.
Reasonable timeframe.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
It's a long time.
That's right. That's a ways off. I've got time.
Is this Lawrence time?
That's right. Okay.
Can I ask the architect a question about the site?
Sure, please.
For whoever the architect is on the project.
And if you could come to the microphone, whoever it is.
Whoever could answer an architectural site plan question.
Absolutely.
On New Hampshire Street, did, has there been any thought of looking at angled parking space there to get more parking on New Hampshire Street as opposed to parallel park?
At this point, we have not studied that. I think that is absolutely an option. You know, we know that the character of, you know, the Vermont Street and New Hampshire Street, the language that's been set up primarily through downtown is the parallel parking. We've got the exception of Hobbs, but for the majority, it's diagonal parking on Mass and then parallel on Vermont and New Hampshire. So, we've kind of kept with that language, but there's certainly a possibility to look at angled parking.
Yeah, and the reason why I say that, I don't think this is any, any bold statement that people haven't thought about, but the real difficulty in this project is going to be 18 spaces on Massachusetts Street. That's going to be the hard, the hard part to get over and how you, if indeed they are made just solely available to checkers.
Sure.
And so, I'm looking for any other way that would be accommodating other than those 18 spaces.
Right.
I'm not saying I'm not going to do it, I'm just saying that that's the hard, that's the hard, that's the hump in the project right now.
Right.
I don't know if the rest of you agree with me, but the people I've talked to, every one of them said, boy, that's, that's tough.
Yeah.
The ones on 11th Street, those are net new parking spaces. I mean, I don't think, I don't have a problem with that, and the ones, if we could come up with some parking on the back, that maybe works, maybe that helps out a lot. So, might want to look at that one.
Absolutely.
I know that depends on the configuration of the street as well.
Right.
But if that works, it might be one of the solutions.
Okay. Well, we got it.
You know, you bring that up, and then the angled parking that, you know, we're placing in front of the new building at 9th and Mass, the number, the increased number of parking places that we're able to get on the west side of, or the east side of New Hampshire Street is incredible. And taking out like seven spaces and end up with 17 new ones, so, you know, it was a really large net gain. But anyway, Dan, one of the things that I think that we ought to do is come up with a plan on how we are going to consider this, whether or not, you know, the suggestion's a good one, and, you know, from the commission, I'd like to have your thoughts on putting together, you know, whether it be a study group that, you know, looks at all of this along with staff and us, and just any kind of things that you want to bring into this. And we'll just start the process, and we'll place that back on the agenda once we have a plan, so that we can, we can approve that, so everybody knows where we're at. Okay? And we'll start that, and we'll try to get this done in a reasonable timeframe.
Can I say one thing? I think that, you know, everybody needs to come to the, I mean, there's so much, there's so much animosity already about this project from, from so many different people, and, we just now started, and I hope folks understand that, you know, Dave, you and I were talking in the back room, and, I mean, this is just, this is just to get the conversation started, and, and really, that's, this is a starting, this is a starting place. You got to start somewhere. I mean, it would have been real bad to throw this site plan on an agenda for a city commission review and approval, being, being the first place for a conversation to start. So, I just want to encourage everybody who is a part of those meetings, I know we're going to reach out to downtown businesses and to the, to East Lawrence, Old West Lawrence, North Lawrence, everybody that will be affected by the food desert, even a little bit of Barker on the south side, and get some input from them. But I just want to encourage everybody to come to the table with an open mind, and let's have an honest and productive conversation and not, not believe the worst about everybody, because I think that's where we've gotten into so much trouble. I agree with Dr. Wildcat. That's a great thing about our community, is that we come together and we have conversations and we give input to one another, but it becomes unproductive and very antagonistic and, and extremely just harmful to, to, to ourselves when, when we can't have productive conversations. So, I just, I would like all of us to keep that in mind, and as this, as this conversation gets started and the ball gets rolling, I hope that we will, the five of us will, will take the lead with that, to, to engage the community, to get input, to consider all points of view. You know, compromise is going to have to be the key here, which means that nobody really wins. Everybody's gonna, everybody's gonna lose one thing or another, whether it's, you know, well, whatever those things might be. But I just wanted to say, I mean, I really am disappointed with all the animosity that exists already before we've even started this conversation, and, and I just would encourage us to, to be better.
Okay. Go. Anyone else? Okay, so, I'm going to entertain a motion that we refer this item to staff. And again, all of your input's going to be necessary on how we, you know, establish, how we're going to go about, you know, considering the dedicated 18 parking stalls, you know, the information request by Mr. Shum, I'm looking at, you know, maybe angled parking, just whatever it may be, that we can put together a plan that we're going to hear all sides of this, okay? And then we'll get some dates to you, so that you all know when we're going to be doing all of this, okay? Okay. So, I would entertain a motion, then we refer this item to staff. I'll make a motion that this item is referred to staff. How's that?
Second.
We've got a motion made in second to refer the item to staff.
It's a late.
Yeah. It's made by Amy, second by Sean. Any other questions or comments? All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Thank you all very much for coming. I look forward to visiting with almost all of you over these, over the next several days. Dr. Wildcat, it's good to see you, and you came on the perfect night. We've been through just about all. Next item on the agenda is to review the existing 2014 City of Lawrence Legislative Policy Statement. In all honesty, we can do this another night.
You can do it any, any night you care to. The upcoming holiday season reminds us that the beginning of the state legislature session is not too far away.
Excuse me. Hey, guys? We're still in meeting.
So, as you all have ideas about items to include or perhaps change in our existing 2014 Legislative Policy Statement, be sure and let me know about that. We haven't drafted a new one. We've just put out the old one and see if you all have any changes. It's pretty common for us to be fairly consistent in this area. Protect home rule, protect our revenue sources, leave us alone on a lot of different other things. We do advocate for a lot of, a lot of things. You see a communication from Hugh Carter at the chamber about some items that they're including in some of their policy statements that he sent this afternoon. That may be appropriate to include in our policy statement. I leave it to you all's political judgment as to the ability of us to persuade the entire legislature, but this is at least a good communication to our local delegation about our priorities.
Right. Okay. So, I would suggest, since the hour is getting kind of late, we can put this on next week, Dave?
Absolutely.
And we'll just do it that way. We've got a lot of things on the agenda tonight, so I would entertain a motion to defer the Legislative Policy Statement for one week.
Moved.
Second. Motion made in second for deferral is made by Commissioner Shum, second by Commissioner Rudin. All in favor of that motion? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Sorry, I forgot to ask for public comment on that item. Next item is general public comment. I can tell you, I'm tired, I guess.
Start the meeting earlier.
Hi, guys. Mr. Mayor, I'm Josh Montgomery, owner, operator, Wicked Broadband. We've had an agenda item on the commission's agenda for quite some time, which everyone's aware of. I don't want to take any more of your valuable time tonight. This past weekend, I was informed that I will be on orders for about three months next year. Two months of that will be short notice, so it'll be four or five days, and then I go. The other month is scheduled. So, I was hoping, given that we've been through the study sessions, we've been through PERC, we've been through the RFI Review Committee, we've been through two public city commission meetings in addition to the other one, and the process has gone forward, and I think that there's been a lot of information generated and a lot of expertise gained on behalf of the commission, I was hoping that we can put our item on the agenda for a week from today for a final vote. So, that was my request, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Joshua, it's, it's been my feeling, and I think fairly important, that we have the fiber policy in place first. That is my belief, and I, you know, as I said in our study session earlier, I would like to have that done, you know, the 13th of January, if we can't do it any earlier. But I understand that's probably the day that it can happen, and that we would hear your request immediately following that.
All right. My concern is, is that we've had final dates on this at several points in the past, including one in October, two in November, where we were supposed to reach the end of this process, and it seems to keep getting extended. You know, the, the opportunity cost for me and my family for this project over the last two years has been $200,000. You know, I'd certainly be willing to, well, I mean, you set the agenda, you choose the date. I mean, I guess in, in, in the realm of equity, I'd certainly propose that maybe the commission consider waiving the franchise fees that we've asked for, total about 50K, going back to the date that we put the application in, which would waive them through the end of this year to offset our costs that we've incurred as part of this process. It has not been inexpensive to go through it. It's not been inexpensive to put various different projects on hold, and it hasn't been inexpensive corresponding and working with the public as part of this process, so.
Okay. Gentlemen, I've said my piece as to what I think ought to happen.
Well, you know, just earlier this afternoon, we said we wanted more information on the common, or the shared, shared use, and I think that's a very important element that we've got to decide. We've got two very conflicting viewpoints on that, and, you know, I wouldn't feel comfortable in passing a policy, wouldn't we, to have that ironed out, you know? So, I mean, I know it's taken a long time, but this is a big deal, too. This is the future of technology in the, in Lawrence for quite some time, and so it's best to do it right. You're supposed to get it wrong and then try to redo it afterwards. It gets ugly.
And that's been, that's been my thought, Joshua. I think that this fiber policy is the most important part, you know, that we have to consider, because it's, you know, it's the one piece of the puzzle that we really have, and that is the fiber and how the fiber's to be used, so.
Can I ask a question? So, I want to, I want to get your thoughts on if it is put on the agenda next week and, and the fiber policy's not done and the common carrier has not been decided, that may cause folks who may vote differently next month to vote a certain way next week, because those aren't worked out. What are your, I mean, because that's kind of the trade-off here, is what, is what two folks just said, so.
I think the only item that I took away from our study session this afternoon that was really in, in doubt was the whether or not the city would require a, put a common carriage requirement on any use of its fiber. I think everything else, as near as I could tell, is, there's a lot of consensus on it. You know, I think that staff has a lot of information on that, and I can certainly forward them. information on that, and I can certainly forward them a pile of information and organize a forum and provide some better documentation of where in the world and in the United States that's been successful. You know, if, if whomever opposes that concept, and it's usually the big carriers, I'm kind of surprised to see a small guy opposing that concept, wants to forward their information, that can certainly find its way to the agenda on Thursday. I mean, I would, I would hope that we could vote on the fiber policy and just follow it up with the incentives policy if that works. You know, I'm not going to insist, you know, but I do want to just highlight that this has been a very extended and very expensive process.
Joshua, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll have the city manager contact you unless you want to go ahead and hear it next week. Any feeling on it?
I think we need to get the fiber policy done. We said it all along.
Yep.
And then we need to move as quickly as possible after that with a commitment.
Yeah, I mean, Joshua, I'll tell you this. If, if the fiber policy is done on the 13th, you'll be on the next week. Okay?
The 13th of?
January.
Of January? That's not something that can be done this month?
I don't think so.
Okay. All right.
Okay. Other public comment? Okay. Future agenda items?
Don't have anything to add.
Commissioner. Okay. Commission items. Commissioner Schum.
Just, the organization that represents the firefighters wants to get started on their contract negotiations. And Diane emailed me a request for some dates to participate if I wanted to do it. I said I was willing to do it, but I felt like I should have the, the agreement with the rest of the city commission. I did it last time. I'll be happy to do it again this time. Somebody else wants to do it, you can have at it. But I, I didn't want to just presume I was going to be the liaison between the city commission and the firefighters again without a discussion about that. So.
I move to have Bob be the liaison for the communication between.
There's no, but there's no discussion.
And I move quickly for a second.
Any other comment?
Thanks.
Other questions?
No, go ahead. We were just going to point out that we're also going to have discussions with LPLA as well, with police officers.
I'd say he does both.
You retired now.
I'm retired. We can wait and.
Wait on the police.
On the police. Have we got, have we set a date to start?
Right, right.
With the police?
We haven't. I have asked for us to have a starting point for some possible dates.
It'll probably come soon, if you got that.
They were, yeah, they were wanting to, to visit a little bit.
Okay. Well, let's, let's don't put that on Bob yet. We got a motion in second to have him do the firefighters. We can establish, we'll see how intense.
Just wanted to mention that.
Yeah, okay. A motion made in second to make Bob power representative with the firefighters discussion. It was made by Commissioner Depper, second by Commissioner Reardon. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed. That passes 5-0. Any other commission items?
I just wondered when we might have a response from staff on starting at 5:30.
I think we could put that, if it's all right with the mayor, we can talk about that probably next Tuesday.
That'd be fine. You know, one other thing that I did want to visit with the commission real quick, and I do know it's late. You know, a month ago, we had the election, the sales tax election on the police facility. And one of the things that I would like to have us do, and we can all be involved, or a couple of us be involved in these meetings, I'd like to have a time where we just have some community input on talking about, you know, the community's feelings of needs, those kind of things. We can, we can start those next month, maybe, you know, you know, a couple of meetings over, you know, July or January and February, I'm sorry. And just try to get input from the public and what their, their thinking is on the facility and locations and all the stuff that goes along with it. I mean, I'm happy to, you know, take the lead on that. And I know other commissioners would love to be involved with it. But, you know, what I'd like to do is be able to direct staff to come up some dates, location where, you know, might just have just general sit down and talk about, you know, you know, the planning of the future. So I think that just try to get some ideas. You know, I decided to wait for a while, let everybody, you know, kind of calm down and, you know, have time to talk about all of it. But, you know, kind of start afresh a little bit and get some ideas as to where we are.
Great idea.
Okay? Fair enough?
Fair enough.
Dan, if you would start looking for some dates in January, February, where we can actually have some sit-down, old-fashioned meetings and just talking about getting some ideas from the public about facilities and locations and everything that goes along with it, I'd appreciate it.
Can I ask one more thing?
Please.
Cedarwood. We had any calls?
We have had a couple. I've got it on my calendar to get with code enforcement and see what came in this week yet. I think we've had one or two.
Can you send me an update?
I will.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay. Any other commission items? Calendar.
Oh, yes.
Got nothing. Dave, anything?
Sure.
Okay. Entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Who moved? Made by Commissioner Schum, second by Commissioner Depper. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you all.